Let me ask Katie first. Well, I'm fine with the attorneys.
Good afternoon. Welcome back to the afternoon session of the Board of County Commissioners meeting. I want to remind you, if you weren't here this morning, that you need to know that you need to turn off your phones and your other equipment that might make noise. And we will move on to the first item. Except that, Commissioner Moore, you had a few checks from this morning that you didn't get to announce, so I'm going to let you announce those now.
Oh, thanks, thanks, Madam Chair.
Because it's your special day.
Oh, you're so sweet. But they're not here now, so, yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner, not Commissioner, yeah, well, former Commissioner Wells, sorry, property repairs of Wells left. But I had two more that I wanted to give out, additional ones this morning. So I do have one for Premier Health Capital, which we all know Premier Healthcare.
Nice, yeah.
And they're trying to grow here in additional in the East Pasco. So I have a $500 check for them. And then I had one, another $500 check I gave to Mr. Wells, since he sits on the board for Feeding Pasco's Perilous. So I had $500 for Feeding Pasco's Perilous. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for those donations to our citizens. Okay, at this time, we're going to move on to the first, first one, and that is P-88.
Item P-88 was published in the Tampa Times on October 5th, 2022.
Good morning, Denise.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair Commissioners. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. PDD 230018 is a set of package amendments for 2022 of the Land Development Code. Just wanted to tell the commissioners that this is the first reading on this item, so there's no action required. Just please, if you would take public comment. And this is set for adoption on December 6th at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie. So I'll read the title. It's an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Chapter 300 Procedures, Section 304 Public Notice Procedures, Chapter 400 Permit Types and Applications, Section 402.2 Zoning Amendment Master Plan Unit Development Districts, Section 304.3.3 Preliminary Site Plans, Section 403.4 Stormwater Management Plan and Report, Section 403.5 Construction Plans, Section 403.7 Mass Grading, Section 403.9 Modifications to Development Approvals, Section 403.10 Landscape Plan, Chapter 500 Zoning, Section 503 AC Agricultural Districts, Section 504 AC1 Agricultural Districts, Section 505 AR Agricultural Residential Districts, Section 506 AR1 Agricultural Residential Districts, Section 507 AR5 Agricultural Residential Districts, Section 508 AR5MH Agricultural Mobile Home Districts, Section 505.9 ER State Residential Districts, Section 510 ER2 Estate Residential Districts, Section 512 R1MH Single Family Mobile Home Districts, Section 513 R2MH Rural Density Mobile Home Districts, Section 514 R1 Rural Density Residential Districts, Section 515 R2 Low Density Residential Districts, Section 516 R3 Medium Density Residential Districts, Section 517 R4 High Density Residential Districts, Section 518 MF1 Multiple Family Medium Density Districts, Section 519 MF2 Multiple Family High Density Districts, Section 520 MF3 Multiple Family High Density Districts, Section 522 MPUD Master Plan Unit Development Districts, Section 525 Neighborhood Commercial Districts, C1 Neighborhood Commercial Districts, Chapter 800 Natural and Cultural Resource Protection, Section 802 Tree Preservation and Replacement, Section 805 Wetlands, Chapter 900 Development Standards, Section 901.5 Transportation Impact Study, Section 905.2 Landscaping and Buffering, Chapter 1000 Miscellaneous Structure Regulations, Section 1003 Gates, Fences, and Walls, Chapter 1200 Nonconformities, Section 1203.2 Restorations, Section 1203.4 Nonconforming Signs, Chapter 1300 Concurrent and Impact Fees, Section 1301 Concurrent Appendix A Definitions and Other Sections as Necessary for Internal Consistency Providing for Applicability Repealer For Providing for Severability Inclusion into Land Development Code and an Effective Date.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I think we finally have someone who can speak quicker than Mike Moore.
That was impressive.
Okay, that was. And there's a lot in here, but I need to...
A lot in here. And I'm going to go line by line with you.
Thank you, because I have no idea what we're doing.
Absolutely. Just wanted to read the title, get that taken care of. Okay, so the proposed amendments, just to let you know, they were presented to the Horizontal Roundtable and Interested Parties Meeting on June 15th, 2022, on October 12th, 2022, and October 19th, 2022. Aside from that, there were some subgroups for certain sections of the code that were created and items were presented as well. So on the, on October 20th, 2022, the local planning agency unanimously found the proposed amendments consistent with a comprehensive plan and recommended approval to the board. In their motion, the local planning agency asked staff to clarify "related by blood" in the definition of "family" and asked staff to further review the prohibition on chain link fences as in certain instances that are, they are used for security purposes. The LPA also requested that aluminum material be removed from the prohibition and to instead include a style of fence as opposed to fence material. Lastly, they asked for comments on the matter from the sheriff's office. As I go through those specific sections, I'll tell you what staff has done, but just to, suffice it to say that "related by blood" has been defined, I'll explain. The chain link fence prohibition, we did remove aluminum, and I do have some photographs, some of which were provided by Commissioner Starkey. And, but I'll go over that when I go through the sections. All right, here we go. We're going to take a dive. So the first item that was amended is Chapter 300 Procedures, and it's the required public notice for development approval applications. We added a row in that section that comprehensive plan amendments are to be mailed, posted, published, and posted. And that was at the direction from the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. And you may have remembered that conversation happening when the Saddle Brook item came up. So right now, they are not, they're only published and in some cases posted but not mailed. So now it requires all three: mailed, published, and posted. The next section is also in the procedure section is published, public notice published, and it adds that published notice may be accomplished by any other means. So this is in anticipation of the effective date of 50.011 Florida statutes, which happens, happened during the last legislative session, where that publication on publicly available website would suffice instead of having to do a publication in a paper of general circulation. So that just adds those three words that allows publication by any other means.
And that statute.
And we are working on a process to have that done on our website. And you'll probably see some things related to that matter soon. The next section is Chapter 400.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I could, just a discussion point. On the development agreement, right now, all you're making them do is just publish it.
Yes.
I don't think that's sufficient, especially if it's a significant change. Because currently the links golf goes over in Hudson's being...
No, they still have to put the signs. This is just a notification.
Yeah.
Published in the paper, right? The Florida statutes changed.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Mariano is referring to Table 304-1, where it calls out development agreement, and it basically states that it's only required to be published. So Commissioner Mariano, are you asking for...
I think we need more, more notice than that, if we can.
Well, this isn't changing.
You can do more notice, but remember, the development agreement is usually something that is implementing MPUD zoning that you've already done.
This isn't a zoning change or a comp change.
This is them building roads. This is building roads. It's the, it's the big legal document that sometimes travels.
All right. The one I'm concerned about is more of a zoning change.
No, this is something.
Yeah, development agreement usually goes along with a zoning change, you know, like pipeline project requirements and things like that.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, so to continue, 402.2B zoning amendment MPUD is being changed, where that, that section talks about that projects that exceed the capacity of 1,200 daily trips are required to do an MPUD. So what we actually added to that section, and it's going to make a lot more sense later on, because we're removing 901.5 Traffic Impact Study, because Traffic Impact Study hasn't existed for many years, we're getting rid of that section and reserving the section. And that's where that 1,200 daily trip table is. So we're moving that 1,200 daily trip table, updating the table, and placing it in 402.2A. And then also, because something that staff will be doing in the future is really analyzing whether 1,200 daily trips, is that a real trigger? I mean, that's been a trigger for many, many years. Perhaps it doesn't make sense, something probably that will be coming to the board soon in 2023. We actually added that projects that are subject to a development agreement, a special exception, conditional use, do not necessarily require an MPUD. So that's being added to that section. The next section is Chapter 400, 403.3F1 Preliminary Site Plans, Time Limit on Approval, adds that if building permits expire after the sixth year of the preliminary site plan, the preliminary site plan also expires. The next section is, and this, this change is going to be for many other sections. The next section is 403.4, 403.5, 403.7, 403.10, and 522. It adds, it replaces the term "hard copy site development permit" with "hard copy site development placard," because it's really a placard, not a permit. All right, so moving on to 403.9 Modifications to Development Approval. This is a section where this is a true Scrivener's error. It, the statement should have been in the, in the nonsubstantial modifications section, not in the substantial modifications section. The statement says that only portions of development affected by the substantial modification are subject to additional review. It should really be only the portions of the development affected by the nonsubstantial modification, because a substantial modification is really like a rezoning or zoning action that goes to the board. So you look at the entire code in that case. So this next section, Appendix A Definitions, Family, Group Living Arrangement, and Residential Treatment and Care Facility. This is one of the things that was changed during the Planning Commission meeting. So the genesis of these changes are basically, and I'm not sure if the Board of County Commissioner recalls, that there was an alternative relief that was submitted to the Planning Commission, because there, a legal counsel for an applicant basically stated, hey, your definition of a family basically is unlimited, includes all kinds of people. So this, this group that we're trying to do, which under our code would be a residential treatment and care facility, because it consisted of seven or more folks, and you'll see it in a second, is really a family. It's not a, it's not a residential treatment and care facility. So in order to make, to fix that, we modify the definition of a family. So the first part of the definition of a family is pretty much exactly the definition of a family for the, Mr. Steinsider, where did, where was your previous employment?
Manatee County.
Manatee County, I apologize. It's from Manatee County. But the Planning Commission said, hey, can you be a little bit more clear as to what it means to be related by blood? Could this be like my seventh cousin twice removed? You know, one of the Planning Commission's members said, hey, I found out through my 23andMe that I'm related to the Queen of England. I mean, could the Queen of England, she hadn't passed away then, could the Queen of England be my, you know, my family member? So basically, what we did is that we looked at the definition of relative in Chapter 112.312 Florida statutes, and we added that definition. So basically, it defines exactly what's related by blood or marriage or adoption.
So number C, is that for like stepfamilies? Because what does it mean? A group of six people who are not so related? Because that seems like it would be everybody, just six people.
Yeah, so, so basically, that would include, kind of like the more modern family members that are, I don't want to get into like the term. So it would, it would include...
It's just an odd statement, not so related.
Yes, because, so basically, the reason why "six" is used is because the state of Florida has a definition of a community residential home that basically says that it's seven or more. So zoning has a, there is a preemption in zoning that basically allows that if you're, if you have six or less, you know, you can operate that use within a single-family residence. So that captures that situation.
And that, this is where you get some of those halfway houses and three-quarter houses.
But you'll see in a second that we changed, there's a, there's now a definition for something called group living arrangement, and you'll see how that captures that particular use. All right, so then this is the new, this is a definition that used to be called group home, but we expanded it to be called a group living arrangement. So basically, this, so this tells you, this is like, it's, 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 it includes, but it's not limited to boarding homes, fraternities, monasteries, convents, homes for abused children, runaway shelters, dormitories, things like that. And it clearly states that it doesn't include a residential treatment and care facility, and it also doesn't include independent-living facilities, because we all know that independent-living facilities is just basically apartments, you know.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
May I ask a question? And I might need Mr. Steinsider to chime in on this as well. I remember we had, it was probably a year and a half ago, we had the one public hearing. We were out at Quail Hollow.
This is as a result of that.
Oh, yeah. What was that considered again? They considered...
Whoa, remember that part where we said, no phones? Thank you. Put them all silent.
Well, we had considered it a residential treatment and care facility under our code. But the, the attorney for the applicant basically stated that because our definition of family was so broad-based and it didn't limit the number of people, we needed to make changes to our code. So we actually worked with that attorney, Mr. Goldstein, and myself. We worked through these definitions and these code changes that are coming up in front of you now.
All right, trial by error, right, over time, something that was written a long time ago, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, and then residential treatment and care facility was modified as well to basically state that these are, these are basically more like skilled nursing facilities and similar facilities that employ the services of skilled and licensed practitioners. That's what makes it different. And they don't include independent-living facilities. So basically, these are the, the next set is going over the changes specifically to residential treatment and care facility. And I just want to point out that this, I'm going to, I'm going to go over what, what hasn't been changed and what is being changed, just to show that, the continuity, yes.
And can you go back to that last slide?
Sure.
Does this mean you cannot have...
One more, Denise.
Okay.
We need the definition of family, I think.
So, moving forward, if you have a single-family home, and if you have a foster home that has a foster family and they take in seven kids, is this saying you're, they're limited to the number amount of kids that they're allowed to have in their home?
It's, 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 what this state is, states is that it doesn't constitute, okay, so please correct me. Foster family, when you foster a family, is that something that happens by law?
But seven, seven foster kids in one house, that's a, that's got to be under one of these...
It's a group home, doesn't it?
That's a group home.
Well, the max is supposed to be five, but sometimes they put, to keep siblings together. If there's a sibling family of five and someone's willing to take them, but you already have a sibling family of three, they try to keep the families together.
Yeah, well, like...
Because the first definition, the A does talk about that it could be, they could be related by law, blood, marriage, or adoption. So I'm just wondering if fostering, does that cover the law part of it? Are they related by law if they're a foster family?
As long as it's covered by law, because then they're foster brother and sisters, then I'm okay with them.
Since this is the, the initial hearing, why don't we look into that definition and you bring it back to us at the next meeting?
Yes, if we can just make sure that they're allowed.
Okay. Okay, so moving forward, residential treatment and care facility, it's a permitted use, no change in the LDC, C1, C2, C3, I1, and I2. It's a conditional use, no change in the LDC in AR, AR1, R1MH, R2MH, R1, R2, R3, and R4. It's a conditional use, it was previously permitted use in AC. Now it's new conditional use in AC1, AR5, AR5MH, ER, and ER2. So we added the locations where it's conditional use in. Group living arrangements, this is new change, because the, the concept has changed as well. Permitted uses in MF1, MF2, MF3. Conditional uses in AC, AC1, AR, AR1, AR5, AR5MH, ER, ER2, R1MH, R2MH, R1, R2, R3, and R4. The point is, if you're seeing like some similarities, is because we have to treat... The point is, if you're seeing like some similarities, is because we have to treat residential treatment and care facilities and group living arrangements similarly. So the next item is Chapter 500, and this affects 512 R1MH, 513 R2MH, 514 R1, 515 R2, 516 R3, 517 R4, 518 MF1, 519 MF2, 520 MF3. And it adds that neighborhood parks that are required in, by Section 905.1 are accessory uses in that district. So staff was kind of like asking the question, hey, do I have to apply for a special exception use in, in a park? I'm like, in, in, in these districts? I'm like, well, is it required by the code? And they're like, yeah. I'm like, well, it shouldn't be a special exception, it's an, it's an accessory use. So that, we changed that. This next section, 517.3 R4 High Density Residential District. What we did on this one is we modified the lot coverage, so it's combined both principal and accessory. Currently, the code says 45% principal and then an additional 20% accessory. We decided to combine them. I'm thinking that this may reduce some of the numbers of master plans that come through, because that's one of the variances that folks have been, have asked for in the past. The next section is a correction in 520, 22.3Q MPUD Conditional Uses. We just, the section is wrong, it should be 402, not 401. And then the term is not short-term rental, it's vacation rental, so we just fixed that. Next section is C1, we're adding animal hospitals and veterinary clinics as permitted principal uses. Used to be a special exception use, now we're adding it as a permitted use. The background of that is that we added veterinary clinics that don't have overnight stays in PO1, and really, C1 builds on PO1. The next section is 800 Natural and Cultural Resource Protection, 802.3. This is what's called the loophole provision for agricultural properties. So it clarifies the exemption qualification for bona fide agricultural land use and exemption expiration. It remains, renames the section to exemptions. And this item was presented at Horizontal Roundtable early in, in the process on June 15th, and then there have, have been many communications with the stakeholders in both September and October. The next section is 805 Wetlands. It basically adds FDEP as a reviewing and/or permitting issuance agency. It also clarifies that public roadways are not, not subject to reasonable use test determination, and provides that recent, the reasonable use test determination applies to non-public roadways and linear public or private utilities. It removes a non-mitigated roadway open to the public travel in public roadway section in there. The next section is stricken in its entirety and it's reserved, 901.5 Transportation Impact Study, we haven't had that for many, many years. Next section is minimum number of shade trees that, that a lot, that is 6,000 square feet or less has. The table is changed from one shade tree to two shade trees, and it adds that a shade tree may be placed in the right-of-way fronting the lot. And then also, it clarifies that buffer landscaping shall be located between the fence or wall and the street roadway, not internal to the property. And it codifies that memo that Terry put together regarding shade trees and regarding fence and wall and street roadway. So this next section deserves a little bit of attention, because there was a good deal of conversation about it, which is 1003.1 Gates, Fences, and Walls. So the Board provided direction to prohibit chain-link fences on, or, or similar fences and gates visible from the collector or arterial roadways, as shown in the Highway Vision Plan and Functional Classification Map. So when this first was brought forward, it said chain-link aluminum or similar fences and gates. Planning Commission basically said, hey, there's some aluminum fences out there that look really, really nice. And Commissioner Starkey did show us some that are metal or aluminum and do look quite attractive. So basically, we did remove the word aluminum and put welded wire, which is a type of a chain-link fence, but it's kind of like, I do have some photographs to show you. It's more like a, chain-link fence have more of a hexagonal pattern. The welded wire fence looks more like a...
It's like hogwire.
Say it again?
Hogwire?
Yeah, it's like a hogwire type of a thing. It does, it is used in a lot of agricultural uses, but I could see how folks can use that type of wire in some commercial applications. Then another thing that the Planning Commission said is that, hey, you know, chain-link fences, they could be used for security, because if there's an, an issue at the business, the, the sheriff's office can come in and just do a spot check, you know, shine the light and see what's going on. So I did, and they, and the Planning Commission said, reach out to the sheriff. So I reached out to the sheriff that same afternoon, and the sheriff said, yeah, you know, they have a, they have a point, the Planning Commission has a point, it could be used for secure, and, and I'm paraphrasing, not quoting the sheriff's office. They could be used for security purposes, but it, it's, this is a policy decision by the Board of County Commissioners.
I also reached out to sheriff, and he had no problem with these other fences.
Right.
And are you gonna show them?
I, so if, yeah. I know there's two photographs that you may have sent, and, or maybe three, and then...
But you'll, I'm sure these board members have seen it, because I'm sure in most places, in most counties too, and cities, when they put a fence, they put one of these. In Hillsborough County, that's what they do with their schools, not the chain-link fence with the bob wire, like, if you ever drive in South Tampa and look at the schools. And we did, we did restrict, we did say legitimate ag users can...
That's it, that has been in the code. There's an exemption section, so the exemption section will certainly pick that up.
Are you saying this one's okay?
That's a welded wire.
Yeah, that's, yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
McDill Air Force Base.
Yeah, but where's the one? You'll see when...
Yeah, it'll, it'll come up in a second.
There.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what, that's fine.
So this could be made of aluminum, so that's why we removed the aluminum, you know, because the Planning Commission was basically, use the style as opposed to the material.
Exactly.
And we did, we did take care of it.
That's a good fix.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to prohibit these.
Okay, so we're gonna move on. The next section is just a, you know, an unintended consequence from when we did the sign code. We should have put that section into the non-conforming sign section, not, not kept it in restorations. So we're just moving the statement to the non-conforming sign section. So concurrency and impact fees, this is like removing a good deal of legacy information, because we have not had transportation concurrency for years and years and years. So it's just removing all the legacy terminology in the section. And then the last item is, I apologize. The next item is defining the term site development placard.
Wow.
All right, so as I stated, there's no action required. If you would please accept public comment. It's the first reading of the ordinance, and the adoption is scheduled for 12/6/2022 at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie. And I thank you for your attention and patience, because I know it was a lot of amendments. And I'm here for any questions.
Well, that, that is a lot for, that much of what I was given in my book, which, that's why there's no way I could read all that. And it's not, you know, it's not...
Well, that's the, so that's the clean, if you got the redline version?
No, this is, doesn't mean no good, because I don't have the redline version, so...
Okay, the redline version is literally this. I only printed the redline version.
You've got both the redline and the clean there.
And this is, it's two, it's two-sided, and I was running out of paper, so I'm like, oh my God, I hope I have 22 sheets. So it's 20, so it's 11 sheets, double-sided, or 22 sheet single.
I'll have to help my staff, because I didn't need to kill this tree right here.
We'll recycle it. I do have a question, and is Desiree over there?
This is a whole course.
Yeah.
I just sent an email just very shortly ago. I found a photo online, and this is something that I do want to prevent, because, does anyone know, is Massachusetts an arterial or a collector? Massachusetts Avenue?
It's like above and...
Arterial, maybe?
Which is a smaller one?
Okay, so the, my question is, driving down Massachusetts, and we have this on the main road, and then also, something that also bothered me about this storage facility is not only there's no access from the main road, they're actually going into someone else's community to get into their storage center. And all of this landscaping, I thought, is supposed to be on the outside of the community.
Yeah, I, I, I don't understand the landscaping.
And this was in question when I first got into office, because I questioned it as it was being built, because the road was being destroyed as the trucks were coming into someone else's community.
Brad Tippin might be able to answer that question, but I believe, and if I'm not mistaken, that the prior, the prior self-storage facility section of the Land Development Code allowed chain-link fences to be used. When we adopted 1105, then that became prohibited. So I don't know, do you know the, the date when this was done?
Last year.
Last year, okay. Yeah, so I, I know that self-storage facilities, the chain-link fences now, under today's code, are prohibited, and then they're further prohibited by what we're, hopefully, will be adopting on December 6th. Regarding the landscaping, I'm not familiar with the project. I don't know if anyone on the team is familiar with the project, if there was an alternative standard, or if there was anything else approved allowing lan, you know, with an allowance of the landscaping.
And in addition, you're seeing this from Massachusetts.
Yeah, but I, I, I mean, I think it's fixed now, but we, to put the landscaping on the inside, I don't understand how we...
It's kind of useless.
It's, it's, it's... I, I, I can't tell you how frustrated I am that someone was okay with that, and, and...
Makes no sense.
And I have to drive by that every day.
I know, I, there's a bunch of these, there's a bunch of these that got through, and, but we, we don't want to see one more of these come in like that. I mean, we're letting the boats have the, make sure that they don't have to see the cars driving by, yeah.
Madam Chair, here in my district, we had a gentleman who had a chain-link fence, put an opaque covering around it, wanted to put the landscaping outside, but they said the code wouldn't allow it, he had to go put it inside. He didn't want to put it inside.
Are you kidding me? Wait, how long ago was that?
That was probably a year ago.
So, so he just wasted money on landscaping for their...
I, I, I think this problem is fixed. I think our planning staff's in the back, and they can tell us that they're, this, we will never see this again, right, guys?
Glad to see it, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, it's, I almost feel like we need to come in with our money and put something across the...
Madam Chair, thank you. I was gonna ask if there's a grant or something to hide it from Massachusetts.
With our tree fund, I, I, we need to fix this, I mean, yeah, so we need to come in and put a buffer to their landscaping on the other side, sadly.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, let's keep going, because we got a lot.
Right, that's, that was my presentation. I'm not sure if there's anyone signed up to speak on the matter.
Guys, do you have any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to make any comments on this?
I have no one signed up in person. I do have one person on WebEx.
All right. We'll promote you in one second.
Okay. Jake Kramer, you have been promoted, you should be able to...
You should be able to, to talk at this point. We, we cannot hear you, I see you, you talking, but we can't hear you. Hold on just a moment. So you're good on our end, just check your microphone on your end and go ahead and proceed with your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you, thank you.
I apologize for the delay. My name is Jake Kramer. I'm a land use attorney at Sterns Weaver Miller, 400 Windy's Jackson Street, number 2100 in Tampa. I'm appearing on behalf of my, several of my colleagues and planner Cynthia Spidel. Have two comments on the LDC amendments. We appreciate Denise and staff, County Attorney's Office, working with a number of us on some concerns, and we were able to work through most of those except for two. One of those is that the new fencing requirement, we believe that's important. We have a concern about the word visible, though, and I think we all know what visible means, but it's not a discrete standard that's, that's measurable. So what would happen if a fence becomes visible if another landowner, say, cut some timber, or it became visible? And so one suggestion would be to have a distance from those roadways, so that it could be a measurable standard. The other concern that we have is on the, we believe that the exemption provision for bona fide agriculture needs a bit more work. I spoke to Florida Farm Bureau in Gainesville this morning, and they have some concerns. I understand they've reached out to staff, but because of the hurricane, they may not have had conversations yet. We think it can work, but the way it's written now doesn't allow for agricultural practices that are protected under the Right to Farm Act to receive their full protection. So again, a concern there is the reach-back provision for bona fide agriculture. We're not looking for exemptions for development, we're just looking to protect agricultural properties in that interim, so that farmers can keep their land while development applications are being reviewed, which as you all know, sometimes can take quite some time, rather than the land becoming fallow for that one to two-year period. So I think we can work through that, and I've asked Farm Bureau, they've addressed this in St. Johns County, and they're gonna be reaching out to the County Attorney's Office. So thank you for your time, and appreciate your help.
Hang on, Jake.
Well, I just wanted to mention, and, and Mr. Kramer knows that we've been communicating with Mr. Kramer back and forth. I think our last email with Mr. Kramer was on October 31st, and we're certainly happy to work through this item and get, if, if the need is to modify the language, we're happy to do so prior to it comes to the Board for adoption.
Yeah, because this county wants to allow for fencing for ag, I mean, I'm an ag...
Oh, the, the, I wasn't talking about the ag, I apologize. I was talking about the 802, the tree removal. What, what all of us know, knows at the, as the loophole for removing trees.
We need to fix that.
Yeah, we're, we're working, Mr. Kramer does have some modifications that he wants to make, my understanding, but I don't know what those are, Mr. Kramer, because I haven't gotten an email from the Farm Bureau, so I'm not sure what those are. And I think you may have said that they are reaching out to us, which makes it seem as if they haven't yet. So we're happy, we're happy to work through that prior to the adoption phase.
There's time. All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, we have one more behind you, Denise, Ms. Fernandez.
Julia Bartunik, I'm Newport Ritchie, Florida 34655. I just wanted to speak that even though technically the foster family issue is covered by the law, because the children are removed legally and placed legally, I think it's really important, because people, when they're in a foster family, they refer to it as foster mom, foster dad. And because we're in an epidemic of removal of children and very, you know, they're struggling to find placement, I think it's really important to include the words foster family in that definition, or else it'll be revisited again and again and again. Thank you.
We're gonna fix that before the next one.
I just, I just want to add on that.
Sorry, you have to add your, put your name and your address, please, into the record.
Okay, Margery Harvey, I am a guardian of light, um, have been for seven years.
We need your address, please.
23347 Sierra Road, Land O' Lakes, Florida. Excuse me. I just want to add to that, that's very important to put into the language. It is by law, and I just want to reiterate everything this woman said, but I do think it should have the language to include foster family, and I thank you for bringing that up.
Yep. Okay, seeing no one else, it's to the Board. Oh, no, there's no action on this one. Okay, we will move on to the next one, P89.
Good afternoon, Carrie Roberts, Purchasing Director for the County.
Ms. Roberts, can I read the publication directory for you?
Yes, sorry.
If this item, P89, is published in Tampa Bay Times on August 30th, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna read the title, but not nearly as fast as my colleague did. This is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, amending various sections of Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 2 of the Pasco County Code of Ordances, relating to purchasing, providing for changes to definition of terms, providing for clarification of the purpose of these sections, providing for changes in purchasing limits and delegation of authority in certain instances, including emergency purchases, providing for changes to local preference, clarifying restrictions on communication during the solicitation process, providing for changes to unauthorized purchases, requisitions and estimates encumbrance of funds, authorization for the use of electronic media and signatures, ethical conduct and sanctions, piggyback contracts, provide for requests for statement of qualifications and invitation to negotiate as methods of procurement, providing for changes in the bid protest procedure, providing for changes related to central stores, providing for changes to authority to debar and debarment and reinstatement, prohibition against award to certain persons and entities, donations, providing for clarification of declaration of surplus lands and alternative disposition methods, and unsolicited, unsolicited proposals, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading, and we do have a short presentation on what has changed since we presented it to you at the... since we presented it to you at the first meeting.
For how?
Next slide, please. So since we read it to you on the 25th of October, we have taken your comments into consideration, and we have taken the emergency authority at $250,000 for Purchasing Director, and we are leaving it at $100,000 in the current ordinance. For the local preference, we also did not make any changes, so the final version has no changes to the local vendor preference policy. For the cybersecurity award, we took the recommendation of the board and increased the county administrator's award authority to $500,000, and then the board would approve anything over $500,000. And then on the donation acceptance, we did increase depart, I'm sorry, county administrator approvals to $25,000. Do we have any questions?
Good changes.
Yeah.
Public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, we gotta do public comment.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Got on this one, we still did.
We could do that under discussion, that's what I was thinking. Okay, we will first, will you want to make your comments first?
Yes, and this is just for the board, and there is a provision in there that authorizes the Purchasing Director to make any corrections that are scribbler's errors before it's submitted to the Florida Secretary of State. Our office is the one that forwards it, submits it to the Department, Secretary of State, and we have a quick turnaround time of 10 days to get that done by law, and if anyone is going to review it, if they could review it sooner rather than later, because we do have a holiday coming up, and I just want to make sure that we get it in in time, and just work well with our Board Records Department to get that done.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone want to speak to our new changes in our policy here?
I have no one signed up for this item, and no one on WebEx for this item.
Okay, seeing no one, take that motion.
Move approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Oh, roll call vote.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Any more of this?
No.
District 2, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to proceed to public hearings, and would the County Attorney's Office please read the procedures, including explanation of flow?
Explanation of flow. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval, and there's no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request that the position be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the Board's Land Development Code. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear them in?
Yes, I would. If you're here to speak on the remaining items, if you could please stand, if you're able to, and raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Okay. All right, we are on P...
Item P-90 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on September 21, 2022.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. P-90 is a zoning amendment in the name of John Light Corrigan Jr. and Maria Volmer. It's a change in zoning from an AC agricultural district to an AR agricultural residential district in northwest Pasco County, north corner of Dream Oak Drive and Hudson Avenue, containing approximately 6.89 acres. This comes to you with a unanimous recommendation of approval from the planning commission on consent.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone...
It's your only consent item, so...
Yeah, it is on consent, so if you want to speak in opposition to this...
I have no one signed up, and no one on WebEx for this item.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, P-91.
Item P-91 was published in Tampa Bay Times on October 9, 2022.
Item P-91 is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL 2213, Hamilton Oaks. It's the transmittal of a proposed large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, amending future land use map, maps 2-15 and Sheet 22, from RES 3, Residential 3 Dwelling Units per gross acre, to Residential 6, RES 6, on approximately 61.04 acres of real property located east of Billmar Road and north of Zephyr Hills bypass, and this is for the transmittal to DEO.
Can you do a little bit of the presentation?
Sure. And our staff will be up. Mr. Brian Junker.
Hi, good afternoon. Brian Junker with Long Range Planning. So here are large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, PDD 230013, Hamilton Oaks. The site location, the property is located in 5930 Billmar Road in Wesley Chapel. It's located on the South Market area of our county. Here is the map of the site location of the 5930 Billmar Road. That's where the project is proposed. The site location, the 16 future land use flew for the project, pick the area, it's RES 3, it's current future land use. The proposed future land use for the site is for RES 6. Current zoning is AC, and it has MPUDs abiding to the south and west. Here, I included a map of the abiding MPUDs, just for a general idea, of the ones that are abiding to the west and to the south as well. Here is the map with the vision road, the Zephyr Hills bypass, that will be going along the south side of the project. The project overview, the proposal, is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, amending future land use map, map 215 and Sheet 22, from RES 3, Residential 3, to RES 6, Residential 6, on approximately 61.04 acres of real property located east of Billmar Road. Location, 5930 Billmar Road. The resolution is to amend flu map, map 215 and Sheet 22. There is also an associated rezoning petition under RC number 7669, Hamilton Oaks, NPUD. The following policies are consistent with the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. We got flu A6 for the RES 6 and RES 3, the official future land use map. We got policy flu 8.1.2, South Market area establishment, and also policy flu 1.4.3 transitional land uses. The recommendation recommends to the Board of County Commissioners, find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan, and adopt by roll call vote.
Thank you. Can you go back to the road network?
Yeah, I know where this is, because I don't recognize where this property is.
Yeah, and so this is what I was kind of talking about this morning.
Yeah.
Where are the collector and arterials around here? I see the Zephyr Hills bypass is coming along the bottom. What are the north-south roads?
To the north, we got, it's a residential, we got, it's called Ruben, if I'm not mistaken. To the south, Zephyr Hill bypass is an extension that is proposed for the future, or right now, unless the staff, the developer, want to...
Well, this is what I want for the county, that I think we need to be, this is what I think we're messing up for the future.
But this is a comprehensive plan amendment, so you wouldn't see the roadway structures unless there are vision roads.
Okay, but I can already tell, I think I can tell, and I see Barbara's moving over here. Is this neighborhood connecting to the neighborhood to the east of it, west of it? No.
No.
Connecting to nothing. So, guys, this is where, we are, if we don't have a road grid set up for all these little developments that are coming in, they're not going to be connected to each other. So at some point, this county has to have, and you have this opportu, it's already kind of messed up in many places, but we really need to pay attention to what the road grid is looking at out here. Our roads will be so crowded, because there won't be enough of them, and there won't be this connectivity. So I get, you can't clap in here, I get really frustrated to see neighborhoods that don't talk to each other, and you can't get from one another without going down on a collector arterial. I think it's not a good planning on our part. That's a general mistake.
Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport Richey, Florida. So the answer regarding the network is, right off of this aerial to the left, which is the west, there is Chapel Crossings Boulevard, also known as Curly Road Extension, has different names.
That's the border of this neighborhood?
It's, so on our west is Chapel Crossings.
I don't recognize it.
And right off of what you see there, you can't see the road, but to the west there, there is, I think it's called Chapel Crossings Boulevard now, is Curly Road Extension. So that's a vision road. And then to the east, you can't see it on this particular graphic, but to the south and to the east is Avalon West, and River Glen Parkway is the road on the east side that goes north-south through Avalon West. It's also a vision road. To the south of this project is Zephyr Hills Bypass Extension, a vision road. We are building our, the next segment of Zephyr Hills Bypass Extension, because right now it ends with the Chapel Crossings project, so that will be a part of this project, is extending your road, which will be a significant benefit to you all. We are working with staff for the MPD conditions relating to that. We have a meeting on Monday. And with regard to the interconnections to the west, the reason why there's no interconnection to the west is that the board approved Chapel Crossings without an interconnection to us.
Right, we can't do that. This is...
So that's the reason why we're not interconnecting, is because the board approved Chapel Crossings to the west without that interconnection to our property.
And will there...
But we do have interconnections to the north.
Okay, Barbara, will there be, is your development making a stub out for an interconnection to the east?
To the east and north, yes.
We are to the east and to the north.
To the east and to the north.
And not to the south.
Not to the west.
Not to Zephyr Hills bypass.
Well, we're, yes, we're gonna have access to Zephyr Hills bypass, and we have to construct Zephyr Hills bypass. The only connection that we won't have is to the west, to Chapel Hill, to that quadrant of Chapel Hills, Chapel's Crossing, to that quadrant of Chapel Crossing, because the board approved Chapel Crossing not to have the interconnection there.
I just, you know, one day I'd love to see what your vision is for a road grid before we really, everyone's gonna need to fly around in helicopters.
Where's Island Boulevard, Barbara? Where's Island Boulevard? Is it connected to this?
Island Boulevard is to the, to the east. It's a ways to the east, yes.
To the right, or...
To the right, if you're looking at this exhibit, to the right.
Off the map.
Yeah, it's off the map, although it is.
What's the red line? What road is that?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
What is the road on the, I guess, south?
The red line.
That is Zephyr Hills Bypass Extension.
What is it?
Zephyr Hills Bypass Extension. In this project, the county is getting the right-of-way for Zephyr Hills Bypass Extension to Avalon West.
I have no idea where this is.
That's not all built yet.
Zephyr Hills Bypass.
Yes, Zephyr Hills Bypass Extension stops at Chapel Crossings.
It stops right there, and then it's going all the way through.
And the road's not there yet?
No, it's not. It stops right here.
Yeah.
See right there? Stops right there, right there.
Probably need to work on better graphics for you all for these presentations.
Yeah, I mean, I just think we need to pay attention to connectivity.
You have done, you know, there's one thing that I notice, and is that you have done a lot with regard to vision roads and one-mile collector spacing and interconnectivity. The staff really is on this. It's one of the comments we get all the time from staff, is regarding the roads and the vision road and the interconnectivity, and we are getting those comments and addressing them. Unlike other parts of the county where you didn't have vision roads, and the county's done a pretty good job of making sure it's good out there.
Sometimes we let those connections go away up here, and we need to not mess up that, guys.
And your staff is continuing to fight for those interconnections, because we get, that's like the number-one comment we get.
Yeah. Okay, I still have no idea where it is, but I just wanted to make that comment.
Yeah, it's just north of Avalon West, which was approved as, gosh, New River, I guess, but it's Avalon West now.
So it's off, it's north of 54?
North of 54, yeah. So Zephyr Hills bypass comes off of 54, goes through Chapel Crossings, and then this project is the next project over from Chapel Crossings. To the south is Avalon West, and to our, not immediate east, but the next parcel over is Avalon West as well. There we go. So you can see Chapel Crossings.
Now, where are we at? Okay, so overpass, I don't know, mine has overpass.
This is the location here. This is Zephyr Hills Bypass Extension right here. This is the intersection of State Road 54 and Curly Road.
Okay.
Then you're coming along here, you're driving down 54. You used to drive along here. Now you can go this way and go through Chapel Crossings. This is Curly Road Extension here. It's been built through Chapel Crossings, and then Zephyr Hills bypass stops right there, and will be extending it from here to this project right here. So it sits right beside Chapel Crossings. This is Avalon Park West. This is their project. Up here is VOPH Dupue Nut Ranch, which is, just came through as a comp plan amendment to change the village type, to be able to more dense village type, and they're working on their MPUD. So this area is really, I mean, we're just one of the last pieces of the development of what's already been put in place for this area.
So isn't Avalon Park supposed to be kind of like a TND?
Yeah, they do have a portion of it where they have, I see them advertising events in the town center.
But where are they connecting to anybody?
You can't see all the roads in here, but tell you want to help?
Okay, because I see, I see them only emptying on the 54, but anyway, that's not for today. That's just kind of my point.
Just for your, it is a TOD, Transit Oriented Development, Avalon Park, and they do connect to Zephyr Hills bypass as well.
Yeah, I see the one. Okay.
River Glen Parkway, the north, River Glen Parkway is a north-south, and goes, that River Glen Parkway goes through Avalon West, will continue through Dupue Nut.
I know, I missed it.
So River Glen Parkway goes through Avalon West, will continue through Dupue Nut, and goes through Watergrass. It's called Watergrass Parkway, and keeps going north. So, I mean, VOPH is a pretty robust network as well, which this has to fit within, so.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone else want to speak on this?
So funny.
Do we have anyone online?
There's no one signed up, and I have no one online for this.
Okay, I'll take that motion again.
Move approval.
All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you. P-92.
Item P-92 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 20, 2022, and September 7,
Good afternoon, Tammy Snyder, Planning and Development. We have Hale Collier, MPUD, PDD 237574. Here's their location map. That is Hale Road bisecting the MPUD, and it's Collier Parkway running north and south on the east. Here's a bigger picture. We have the US 41 over there on the west. Proposes a rezoning from AR Agricultural Residential and R1 Rural Entity Residential zoning districts to an MPUD to allow for a maximum of 109 single-family detached dwelling units and associated infrastructure on approximately 46.1 acres. Here's their master plan. Presently, the subject parcels are used for residential and agricultural pursuits. The PC heard the item at the September 22, 2022. The PC heard the item at the September 22nd, 2022 hearing, and voted to recommend denial per the code and comp plan section cited in the agenda memo. The county engineer identified levels of safety issues with Hale Road. Therefore, the applicant collaborated with her to reduce the number of proposed access points on Hale and revise the conditions of approval to reflect additional required safety improvements, such as turn lanes in both directions at both access points, and a sidewalk on the south side of Hale Road to the Collier Parkway intersection and continuing down Collier. The PDD found the proposed request is consistent with the Pasco County LDC chapter plan, as noted in the Post Planning Commission analysis attached to the agenda memo. And with that, the PDD recommends approval with conditions.
All right, I think, Board Members, any questions for staff? Before I have a presentation by the applicant?
Madam Chairman, do you have ex parte forms that you're supposed to be entering into the record?
Oh, yes, housekeeping, yes. As a matter of fact, there's been a few batches that have already been sent to the clerk's office. There was some included with this agenda memo as well.
For clarity, I've been with the applicant.
Yep, I did too.
Yeah, I did applicant and, and citizens.
Okay. All right, then we'll hear from the applicant. You have 15 minutes?
Thank you. Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Avenue, Newport Richie, and I have been sworn. I know many of you watched the Planning Commission meeting, and I know a lot of the people that were there are here today. So, you're familiar with some of the concerns of Ms. Bishop, who is one of the landowners on the other side of the lake from this development, as well as many of the residents who lived out on Hale Road that raised concerns in regards to the safety of Hale Road and the impacts that this proposed development were going to have on Hale Road. KB Homes, I think they did this through the Renner MPD, took the concerns that we heard very seriously. We went back, we vetted those concerns, we had various conversations with staff, including your county engineer about the concerns. And I think what you'll find, we have a PowerPoint that Cindy is going to come up here and go through, but it, and it's very detailed. But you'll see that we made some very significant revisions to our MPD plan to address those concerns that were raised. The development now, the majority of that development is now going to be going out onto Collier Parkway. That's where the main access will be. And staff is supportive of that. Your county engineer is supportive of that. We do have 22 units on the north side of Hale Road that are still, still going to need to utilize Hale Road for access. That's the access to that property. But we have agreed, even though the, the traffic studies didn't warrant it, there was nothing in the code or anything of that nature, we did agree in discussions with the county attorney to go ahead and put in the improvements that Tammy's identified, the right and left site access turn lanes, as well as the additional sidewalk improvements. But I'm going to let her, let Cindy jump up. We're here, all of us are here to answer any questions. We appreciate your time today, and we hope we can get your support for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and members of the County Commission. I'm Cindy Terrapani. Happy to be here again with you today to talk about this project. As Shelley alluded to, we have made a variety of significant changes to the project, which I will detail on the slides, but I want to give you a little bit of background about the project first. Before I begin, I'd just like to confirm that I am speaking as an expert witness in the field of land use planning, based on my master's degree from Clemson Uni, my undergraduate from Clemson and a master's degree from Florida State University, and over 41 years, 41 years of serving as a planner in both the public and private sectors. We've assembled a very robust team with experience in every area that you need. Of course, Ms. Johnson is our attorney. Civil engineer is by Florida Land Design, and both Jay Hunting and Robert Fudge are here from that firm. Mike Razor from Razor Transportation Consulting is, will speak to you at the end about the transportation issues. You all know KB Home. It's one of the largest national builder in Florida, building for over 50 years in southwest Florida. It has the financial and administrative capability to complete this project and do the entire project. KB has three projects under construction in Pasco County, Legends Point on north on, on the north, north of 52, on the west side of Hayes, River Run on US-301, and Sanctuary Ridge on Old Pasco Road. Again, to identify the site, the site is split by Hale Road. The north side has a smaller number of units, the south side has the larger number. It's a 46-acre site with part of the lake, Lake Placy, located in the north side of the property. Here's just some aerial photos from 1952 and '72 showing the use of the property as grazing and clearly citrus for some period of time until citrus is really not viable in certain parts of Florida anymore. We all know for that unfortunate situation. The most important thing, I think, about this project is that it is one of the last undeveloped portions of property in the Collier Parkway-Landa Lakes area. We are east of 41, west of Collier Parkway is a 46-acre parcel divided in two portions, but as you can see very clearly from this aerial, Dupree Lakes is to the north, Sable Ridge to the south. Lake Paget Estates and different sections of Lake Paget are also located to the south along Collier Parkway. And the entire area from this property, south to State Road 54, are completely developed with residential uses. In our particular case, we are, we are adjacent to single-family detached homes in almost every case, with two exceptions. To the west, there are, there are single-family homes, but on larger lots, and we'll talk about what we've done to mitigate there. To our east, across the lake, is the one property owner who is an objection to this property, to this project.
You can't, you can't do that, sorry.
Again, this is the future land use map. All, everything you see in green is RES 6. Of course, that's six units an acre. This project is proposed at 2.4 units an acre, two and a half, 2.3, 2.4 units an acre, well under, less than half of the planned category designation, which is your long-term plan for this area and the rest of the county. The kind of purply-red you see there is along Land Lakes Boulevard, US-41. Of course, that's different kinds of commercial activity and land use on that section. Our opponents are going to speak to you and tell you to ignore this comprehensive plan and look solely at the zoning. And I would just ask you to take a step back and recall that this area has been designated RES 6 for eons and eons in the county's comp plan. And our applicant, KB Home, has relied on that comp plan category and put together a project that is complies with that plan category. Again, just another map. Again, the site is in red. You can see all the single-family homes. There is some RES 3 to the northeast. And also in that RES 3 area is the Pineview Elementary and Pineview Middle School, in very close proximity to the site. And I want to talk now about the changes we made since the Planning Commission meeting. We had a very, quite a few comments, both by the planning commissioners, by the staff, and we continue that conversation with the staff, and then comments from the residents. One of the main concerns was the access along Hale Road and the use of Hale Road for the project. So, the project, as we presented it to the Planning Commission, had a driveway on the, two driveways on the north side of Hale Road to access those lots, and a third driveway also on Hale Road to access the southern portion. So, a total of three driveways on Hale Road. There was no access to Collier Parkway at the Planning Commission presentation. As a result of the concerns about the existing status of Hale Road, there was a significant opposition to new development using that road. So, based on these comments and working with the county staff, we have proposed, which is on your agenda today, a revision to the concept plan that makes major changes to that. Again, the western driveway on Hale Road for the northern portion was eliminated. The driveway to the south property was eliminated, so now there's only one driveway remaining on Hale Road, and it serves only 22 lots. The primary entrance, and that's the one driveway on Hale Road that remains, again, serving only the northern portion of the property. The other major change that we did is two things along Collier Parkway. One, we have shifted the primary entrance to Collier Parkway, and that becomes the sole entrance and the primary entrance to the south portion of the property. No longer access from Hale Road, only access from Collier Parkway. We've also provided, as the staff suggested, an interconnect. That's the, the double arrow you see for the corner parcel that's at Hale Road and Collier Parkway, which we do not own, is not part of the project. We're providing an interconnect through our property to get there, so they can get out to our driveway and then out to Collier Parkway. The other things that we have done as a result of the staff recommendation, we are committing to do turn lanes at both driveways. So, at Collier Parkway, we will have a northbound left turn into the project. We'll also have a southbound right into the project. Neither of those are warranted by the number of trips. The staff suggested that it was a good safety improvement, and we agreed to make that, and they are memorialized in the conditions before you today. We also agreed on Hale Road for the one driveway that we have remaining to do the same thing. A west, west, eastbound left into the project, and a southwest, easterly driveway going, turning right into the project. So, both turning movements at both driveways are proposed, and they're memorialized in your conditions, and of course, those are solely at the developer's cost. Those red bars are just showing the, the turning movements, and we also have Mike Razor, who will speak to those in a few minutes more specifically. Other accommodations that we made along the, the north half of the property, because you can see, the property, our property line is split down the lake. So, the eastern portion of Lake Placy is owned by the bishops, their property to the east. You can see where the lots are in the... It's not doing it. Not sure how to run that part. But the pink that you see there, those pink lot lines, you can see the distance to the property, to the bishop property. It's at least 800 feet at a minimum from our new houses to her house, which is further north within the site, and it's a substantial, substantial distance from the property line of our new homes to the edge of her property. We also have reduced along the western edge there, we have reduced the number of lots, and again, memorialized on the MPD master plan. There'll be no more than 12 lots along that western property line, because the houses to the west of us are larger lots. And we also, along that western edge, and actually in the entire northern portion, the pink you see on this map denotes that these would be the larger 50-foot lots. And finally, we've committed to a 20-foot buffer along that western edge, where none is required, because it's single-family to single-family. But we are committed to doing that buffer along there. Now, to look at the south side in a little more detail, again, you can see there is no driveway anymore on Hale Road to serve the south side. The primary entrance will be from Collier Parkway with an interconnect to the corner that you see up there in the, right at Hale and, and Hale and Collier Parkway. All the lots adjacent to Sable Ridge, which are to our south and east, are 50-foot, 50-foot lots. And again, that's a commitment on the MPD master plan that they would be that size. We also are putting in a buffer and a fence along that edge as well, where no buffer would be required, because again, it's single-family detached homes against existing single-family detached homes in Sable Ridge. With regard to environmental commitments, we do have wetlands within the site. We have a category-one wetland, which is the Lake Placy. We're not proposing any impacts to that lake, and we will, of course, have the required wetland buffer around the lake. We also are not allowing any motorized boats on Lake Placy. Again, memorialized in the MPD conditions, not just something I'm saying up here, but actually a requirement of the MPD. We plan to repair and replace the existing dock, which is on the south side of the lake to the west of our main, our entrance on Hale Road, but we will not expand that existing dock. And again, no new environmental impacts, no, no environmental impacts at all to the shoreline and the wetlands along Lake Placy. We've had multiple conversations and emails between KB Home and the property owner, Mrs. Bishop, and her attorney. KB Home principals visited the site at the invitation of the property owner. We believe we've made every reasonable effort to be a good neighbor with the owner who shares the use of Lake Placy, as committed to in the MPD conditions. Talked about these transportation commitments. To highlight it again, only one driveway on Hale, serving 22 lots. Left and right turn lanes on Hale, new principal primary entrance on Collier, turn lanes on Collier Parkway as well. Sidewalks on Collier Parkway from the edge of our property all the way south, and then also on Hale Road. Sidewalk would cross the corner parcel, so it would go across our entire property to the corner, from the corner south, all the way down, the total, all the way down to the southern edge of our property and connect to Sable Ridge. We also have a requirement to dedicate some right-of-way along Hale Road, which is also shown on the MPD master plan. The surrounding community, as you saw in the aerials, is single-family detached homes. That's the exact same use that we're proposing here today. We have increased our lot size next to Sable Ridge, and we've made commitments about limiting the number of lots and the size of the lots to our western property line. The comp plan would allow 213 lots under that RES 6 plan category, 213 units. We started out, our initial assessment was about 150 lots, and you can see that's declined over time as we've refined that site plan. But our plan today is at 109 lots after having neighborhood meetings, extensive meetings with staff, and relooking at all of these issues. Again, what we are proposing today is about half of what you could do on the project, on the site, under the comprehensive plan. I want to quickly show you some of these elevations, so you can see all these homes that I'm going to show you. On both sizes of lots have a two-car garage and a double driveway. One of the 50-foot lot products, 50-foot lot product, again, with a two-story. We are mindful and very aware of the architectural diversity requirements. Those are in our conditions of approval. We will absolutely adhere to those. We also will adhere to the new tree planting requirements within the property. I think my time is about up. I just want to show you the last slide. So, here's the revised concept plan based on the Planning Commission input, Planning Commission commissioners, your staff, and the neighbors who really opposed any more traffic access on Hale Road. I'm going to stop now and let Mike take over.
You better be fast.
30 seconds. Michael Razor, Razor Transportation Consulting, 25 years of experience as a traffic engineer, and I have not been sworn. Could we stop the clock so I can get sworn?
All right, stop the clock. Put another minute on there.
Every second counts here.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to condense my presentation and go right to safety. In regard to traffic safety, we were provided with crash data from Pasco County Traffic Operations in March of this year. The data was for the preceding five-year period, which is typical, a typical period for traffic crash analysis. The traffic crash data identified 25 crashes on Hale between US-41 and Collier Parkway, excluding the intersections on either end. The crash data was used to calculate a crash rate for Hale, which was identified as 1.65 crashes per MVM, which is million vehicle miles of travel. The crash rate was compared to crash rates for similar facilities... May I finish?
Yeah.
In Pasco County and in the Tampa Bay area, using data provided by FDOT. For similar facilities in Pasco County, the crash rate for Hale was about 85% of the Pasco County crash rate for those facilities, so about 15% less. For similar facilities within the Tampa Bay area, the crash rate is about 3% less, or 97% of the Tampa Bay crash rate. During discussions with a county engineer, Margaret Smith, she believed that the implementation of the turn lanes, three of which are not warranted by traffic volumes, would maintain the level of safety and level of service within the area, and specifically on Hale Road, and not degrade traffic safety operations, and thus fully addresses and effectively mitigates the traffic impacts of the project. And of course, I'll be here to answer any questions that do arise. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I have some questions, but, Board Members, do any of you have any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Just, just a couple. I, again, I met with citizens, a young lady that's out there right now, I think, as well as the applicant, I think it was last week, I think it was last week. They all run together. So, I just want to clarify a few things. You might want to, somebody come up. Cindy, you can too. I don't, I don't, I don't know, but, just want to clarify a few things, because going back to the Planning Commission meeting, I think there were, there was a couple of Planning Commission meetings, if I'm, if I'm not correct. There were some concerns. And I know one of the big ones with the neighbors, is it like Rosebud Consortium?
Continuum. That's, yeah, Mrs. Bishop's property.
Top Hound of people, or what is, what is the word?
Um, it's a, it's, yeah, it's, it's like a school.
What's a school?
But she lives on the property, yeah.
Oh, okay.
They do research studies and stuff with regards to conservation and things that.
Well, I know, I know the big thing they were talking about was environmental aspects of the lake, for example, where about motor boats and things like that. So, you have in your, you mentioned it earlier, but you have in your deed restriction, of, or some type of deed restriction you're going to put on, I guess, the HOA that states that it would only be like kayaks, canoes?
Correct. No motorized boats, yes.
No, no motorized boat.
And we included it in our.
How many homes are on this lake this time?
Um...
You can't talk from the audience.
The south, well, the north end only has 22 lots, and that's what would be a budding.
No, no, not yours, not yours, not yours, not yours.
Oh, okay.
Currently on the lake.
Um, how many lots there?
I see hands going up.
I actually don't know.
You can't, just don't talk from the audience, because you'll lose your time later.
To answer your question, Commissioner Moore, I believe the only properties that front on the lake today are Mrs. Bishop. And there's a property to the north, and I have to look at the area, recall if they have a home, there might be a home on that as well.
So, I think what I saw, there was just two, right?
I believe there's only two, yes, sir.
Okay, cool. All right. Do we, is there anybody currently have motorized vehicles on the lake that we know of?
I don't know. We're, we're committed to not doing it. I don't know that they, they don't have it.
Have you seen any out there? Has anybody seen any motorized, I mean, is there people out there in jet skis and ski boats?
No.
Or is that, the lake's too small for that?
Um, I think you could have a little fishing boat, you know, a little scooter boat or something out there.
Nobody's seen that before.
I, I doubt it. I doubt that. I doubt that there's bass boats on that lake.
Well, the only reason I ask is because, you know, I mean, we want to make sure, you know, if we're going to, anybody, if either side, if they make a concession, we want to make sure it's an even playing field. So there's people out there, you know, cruising around in, um, in, in.
Their little fishing boats and stuff.
Motorized bass boats that are going to push oil in there and then you're asked not to do it. I mean, we got to make sure we're all on the same page.
Agree.
Both sides. So we want to make sure that, that's not going on. Okay, so you made, you made that concession, recreates to that, to the doing that. The dock, you mentioned earlier, there was concerns about the dock?
There's a dock there and, um, Mrs. Bishop has a dock as well on her property that they utilize for their various functions and so we committed to go ahead and rebuild our existing dock, but to not build it any larger or in any, you know, aggressive form beyond what they have their dock built. So it's going to basically look like their dock.
Okay. Yeah, because I know when I met with one young lady over the phone or with WebEx or whatever it was, um, yeah, there was the environmental concerns about that and other, other things. So we're, so no motorized boats, no like access for any motorized vehicles on the lake.
No, no.
We'll throw that out, out the door now. I think the other thing I saw on the planning commission, the big thing too, was the concerns about the ingress egress being on the mainland, being on Hale Road.
Correct.
So now we've moved for the, to the development to the right of, of this, right? Okay. We've moved that to Collier Parkway now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I thought when we had a conversation was, was the steam, was, was the team, was our staff still making you have, uh, like an emergency ingress egress on Hale or not?
That is the access, that twenty-two lots that Hale Road.
Well, I know about the twenty-two ones, but it doesn't go across the street. So you're not, there's no other access?
No, no.
For the development to the right?
The one on the south end? No, the county engineer is comfortable with the access on the Collier and the turn lane network.
It is stubbed.
Yes, it's stubbed out to.
To connect.
Yeah, there's a stub to the west and there's a stub to that corner property.
To go see their neighbor.
Okay.
Which is good. I'll point out too that the, the south section that now will be accessed solely through Collier Parkway only has around, it could be as many as eighty-six lots, um, depending on final engineering. So it doesn't, doesn't require that second access because we're not triggering that that highway.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Okay, so those are the things I talked about. I know those were some of the concerns watching the planning, planning commission meeting. And initially you were looking to, for approval for how many?
The comp plan allows for two thirteen. We came in at one fifty, we're down to one oh-nine.
Okay, so it was originally two fifty?
It could be.
Two thirteen.
Yeah, two thirteen, yeah.
Came in at one fifty, down to one oh-nine.
Yeah. And we anticipate we're obviously going to lose a little bit more as far as when the infrastructure goes in, I think as Cindy's pointing out, so.
Okay. Alright. Um, I don't want to keep having to come back to you, so I just want to make sure if you're okay. I want to make sure I have all those questions answered now, just want to make sure that's solidified. Um, yeah, I think, I, I will let others talk about it. I know, you know, there's been talk on, on this board about lot sizes and concerns about certain lot sizes, so I know some other people will probably talk about that. You know, I, because I want to, obviously we want to hear the public speak and we're going to listen to the public speak and, uh, there's quite a few people that obviously want to speak. Hopefully you guys are all, you know, have, have this all arranged, so somebody parks, talks on one subject, the next one another subject, then another subject. So, yeah, we, we hear everything that you're concerned about.
And not the same thing over.
Right. Because then it just gets mottiness and you lose track. So make sure you have, hopefully you have that planned out. But, um, you know, I, I remember, if I'm not correct, and you guys probably don't remember this because you might not have had a meeting for, with the applicant, and I think somebody a few years back put out a, um, a sign to, for a public hearing, maybe there was a meeting. Wasn't there a seven-eleven at one time, was it going along, around this lot? Yes, or maybe the one next door? I was close by, right? So I remember there's a lot of concern about that and I think, I don't think, I know that person left, um, which I don't disagree. That's probably not a, a good fit for a neighborhood like this, right? I, I don't disagree. So my, my concern about, I'm just going to say this before we have public comment, is, you know, we're looking at, we're going from two thirteen to one fifty to one oh-nine and now we're making the entrance X, the ingress egress, the main one on Collier now versus Hale. You know, this is scaled down quite a bit in just thinking about the residents, I've been around for eight years, um, is that, okay, so we have one oh-nine. This gets denied, one year down the road or two years down the road or three years down the road, you're going to have a different board. And they could come in with a huge multifamily project that's going to put eight hundred units there because it'll fit how they stack them now. So that's just something I'm thinking about. I mean, you know, being honest, I'm looking at this, it's, most of the traffic's going to be on Collier now. I know you're going to have some on Hale, but, you know, as families grow and your neighborhoods grow and you bring in young people, I've got three kids now, one's driving, I'm going to have another one driving three years, another one driving three years, then I'm going to be on the street asking for money because I'm not going to be able to afford all the gas for their cars.
The insurance.
You know, but, um, because they only, you only have a few on the other side of Hale. You know, I'm just, again, I'm thinking out loud early here, that's just a concern to me is like, you say no now to something small like this, it's going to have a, in my opinion, it's very minimal impact to something that could be a gigantic impact two or three or four years from now. And I can't tell you what's going to happen down the road with other boards, what they're going to say yes or no to. So that's just something to consider because they could come in here and rezone this for a huge multifamily, multifamily project, or they could add more density.
More density.
Or the worst could, because you saw seven-eleven almost come, this could, you know, somebody could come in and wanted this to be a, a huge retail project and a big box store could be there. I mean, you never know. So just something to think about. That's it for me for now.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Uh, my concerns are, what size are the lots?
So the lots are forty and fifties. Um, we do have, I know the board, you know, the code and the board's resolution requires that if we go beyond the fifty percent, everything has to be rear-loaded with a recognition, of course, of the concerns that you guys have about parking. Our fronts are twenty, um, but that's twenty from back a sidewalk, so a, a full car will be able to fit in the driveway. Two cars actually next to each other. Because you have your five foot, you have your twenty foot.
The problem is, is in some of these neighborhoods we're talking about, they, they can't park there without parking over that sidewalk and you end up having families or kids playing in the street because they can't play on the sidewalk, can't even actually walk on the sidewalk. In my subdivision, fifty-foot lots, there's no room to park a vehicle from the garage without crossing the.
But if they have a two-car garage, they can put two cars in.
Yeah.
They have two-car garages, can't get two cars in these garages.
I know, but they can park.
One next to each other in the driveway.
One next to each other. But if you have a one, if you have a single car driveway and a townhome, it's, they're behind each other? That don't work.
Yeah, it don't.
Or if your front, I think it's related to, to your front yard setback. So if your front yard setback, I know some of them have ten, um, I've heard of, you know, you're going to probably have an issue with it hanging over the sidewalk, but this is twenty from back a sidewalk, so there's plenty of room for two cars to sit in that driveway. And then you'll still have your five-foot sidewalk, so.
Yeah.
But I, I know what you're talking about. I've seen.
I can't park my, my home, I can't park my Ford truck between my garage and my sidewalk without interfering with the sidewalk.
It's not good.
Well, I know the HOA restrictions for their standard, because I've looked at them, do not allow any commercial vehicle parking overnight or anything of that nature, so.
No, he's, he's just driving a big, big.
Big old truck.
He's pulling his horses.
We have one too, so I know they're, they're big.
Good luck if you get code to go on.
Yeah, no, we're going to, we, we as a board, just letting the development community know, we're going to be looking hard at the setbacks for especially single-car driveways. Because we looked at photos this morning where the cars are literally, well, we can show you one here in a little bit.
But I mean.
They don't even fit, they're in the street.
I'm on fifty-foot lots and you have actually really no backyard and you have not much front yard and there's no room to park a car outside the garage that doesn't touch the sidewalk right now. It's fifty-foot lot.
Yeah.
I have a real issue with it, forties and fifty-foot lots now.
The depth on these are a hundred and ten, so I, I, with the hundred and ten and then the twenty-foot from back a sidewalk, the, the cars should fit. Um, I probably have a rendering I can pull up and have, and send somebody.
My truck's actually probably twenty feet because it's a bit, two fifty Ford, so.
What is your setback? I didn't.
So it's twenty from back of sidewalk, which is the difference. So you're going to have five foot where you have your sidewalk and then you have twenty foot from the backside of that sidewalk to the garage and you can fit two cars in there on a double, so, and not, and pinch on that five foot.
But the teenagers cannot have cars, see?
Yeah.
No car. Or they have to.
Well, like you said, if we can afford them anymore.
No, I agree. Uh, but here's why, I, I do have a question. Did, did you have any? Because I'll jump in with mine. I think the chair should go last. Um, I have a question on, and this is for staff too, um, and we talked about this when I met with you and I, sorry, I don't remember what the answer was. What is, and what is the multi-use trail plan for this area? And I guess that's to my planning staff. Because Collier Parkway's, you know, got schools and parks and who's coming up?
Yeah. We've got, um.
Because Collier Parkway doesn't have it, anything on it. I don't, I don't even know if it has sidewalks on it.
Yeah, it does. Certain spots above the, uh, Matatera, until you look at, yeah, certain parts of Collier Parkway, they can answer more of it.
Alright, because I drove.
For the library.
As a sidewalk.
Oh, a trail, no, there's not a trail.
No trail.
There's sidewalks, yeah.
So, and, and when I was, um, at, I think it was a political event, which was campaigning, I watched all the golf carts come down that sidewalk to pick up their kids at some school down there. Um, but I just wanted to know, is there a plan? Because I, is, is Collier, I see we have right-of-way on the other side, so it seems to me that, is one day Collier going to be more lanes or is it? Looks like, looks like we have land preserved there.
Hey. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Niktario Espitos from the Planning and Development Department. So Pasco Mapper, which is a GIS service that we use, um, in, in our planning activities, is illustrating that there is a path network established for Collier Parkway, but it's kind of, uh, stop and go in its application on the maps. I'm not sure if that's, if there's an error in the layer, but the southern portions of Collier Parkway going from State Road Fifty-four north does include a trail network on it up until about, I would say that is Parkway Boulevard and then the, the layer stops for some reason. The trail network begins again, uh, at Collier Parkway at Dupree Lakes Boulevard, uh, and then there are trails that, um, basically go into the, uh, uh, natural areas, the conservation lands areas that are east of, of Collier Parkway and Parkway Boulevard.
So.
So it's a little stop and go. It's, I can't answer you the full question at the moment.
Yeah. This is, this is to my administrator over here. And so when I look here, um, there is a sidewalk on the east side of Collier Boulevard, right? That's, uh, there's a sidewalk that goes in front of the library.
Yes.
And the Level X recreation.
Yes.
Okay. So which side, what is planned for the, uh, other side of Collier Parkway? Because I'm looking at the property appraisers map and it looks like we have like a right-of-way preservation plan going along there. Because I asked the applicant, um, were they asked to save land for a multi-use trail? And I said no. And so I didn't know what the plan was for Collier as a major road in the county. Do we have a plan?
Uh, I think I would defer to the, uh, county engineer, who I believe is online and see if, um, she might have an idea.
And maybe there isn't going to be one here. I just didn't know.
Oh, okay, my bad. Uh, I thought that the county engineer was online. But that's something that we'll have to research for you.
Yeah, so this is, this is an issue for me and I hate to keep beating a, a dead horse here and it's not their fault. It's that where's our plan and how, how do I know if this, to approve this project today fits in with that plan? So, uh, it's, so I'm not, I don't know if what they've designed will allow for a multi-use trail on their side one day. Um, and so do we need to ask for more space up front? I mean, but it's so unfair to them for us not to have our plan. So I don't, and I guess who I would ask the applicant, is there room for you? Do you have a sidewalk in front of your project on Collier I'm talking about?
If I'm.
And i- is it planned for a sidewalk? Because I can't tell on your diagram here and I can't remember from our conversation. Or is there room to put a multi-use trail there?
If, if I may, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Madam Chair. Collier Parkway, whenever it does get built out, we'll be following our tipicals, which do provide the necessary, which, those tipicals do provide the necessary trail and pedestrian facilities on them.
Which side?
Uh, when they get built. I think it's for both sides. So, but to tell you which side a sidewalk will be on versus an eight-foot path, I would have to look at the tipicals.
So, so do you see my dilemma here though? Because if there's, is there already a sidewalk on the one side?
Right. I, I'm not able to answer that at the podium, but the staff has the book in front of them when they do the reviews.
Hey, Terry, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
We don't, yes or no?
They don't know?
I know, that's, I mean, we don't know.
That's not good.
Go on and on about it. I mean, it's like, we do or don't, you know? It's one or the other.
I would say that we do.
We don't want to, we don't want to, we're not going to debate if we're, you know, what the future is, I mean, unless we know the answer to it. Not you, not you. I mean, it's like yes or no.
Yeah, so.
We do know we have the tipicals, they're in the comprehensive plan. I'm not the subject matter expert that deals in those tipicals, so I can't tell you that it would be on the east side or the west side of the road. But that information is reviewed when these, when the site plans come in and the engineering is done for these projects.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Just the importance of the, forget their project, right? But if anything that comes up, like the chair stating, we, the team, needs to know the answer to it because that's pertinent to the situation going on. So, I mean, I'm just being honest. This should be known when you have a development that's going to, but a major road like this. So, I mean, I don't disagree with the chair on this, but you got to know these things before we.
Okay, so, um, and I think you all have plenty of time because there's going to Okay, so, um, and I think you'll have plenty of time, because there's going to be a lot of public comments, so we can find, maybe we can find out more and, and put those conditions into the approval if it's on that side. If, if that's a thought, so. Uh, and I, I just want to go over my thoughts on this so far, and of course we'll take public comment, but, and I, I, I want to say, I went out and drove on Hale Road, because I wasn't really familiar with it at all. I've been on Collier Parkway many times. Um, and if this had been on Hale Road, I would have had major issues. Um, so, uh, that is a narrow road, and I wonder if there is a plan for it one day to get some fixes. I, I see those kind of same conditions on Trouble Creek. There's, it has kind of that drop-off on one end. But Collier Parkway is a, I think that road's in good shape. Um, and, and then, and there's plans one day to widen it. And, um, and, uh, but I'll listen to public comment for more thoughts. Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm glad you brought up the sidewalks, because as well as, and, and the conversation about Collier is important. When I, when I first looked at this, we talked earlier, connectivity is important. By going down to one connection, I think you weaken the whole development anyway. Instead of diversifying where they can go, now they've got to go left, right, left, right, or right, left, to get out, and it, it just doesn't make sense to do that, to go. When you look at Hale Road, Hale Road and Bell Lake Road, I think were two great roads we had done years past to connect Collier to come over. But if you try to go in, in, some of these kids that are going to be living there, if they're going to go to Hale Road, they're going to go down to Heritage Park? How are they going to get there? You know, anyone, anyone, anyone going down that way, anyone on, to the 41 whatsoever, you've got a narrow, narrow road that's going to be dangerous. I think the neighborhood is developed all around it, but I think most of your lots are 60s, 70s. I mean, I don't know why we want to get away from that. I think the larger lot size makes more sense, cuts, cuts down your flow, and then maybe it enables you to, to put in some type of infrastructure. And sometimes we have developers, they actually go out and go off-site and go build more. We, we give them impact fee credits for it, but to go make it safer to go build a sidewalk connecting to another area. This is a very dangerous area along Hale Road to, to really look for that. And if you're going to get in, and I'm just part of the conversation about what's going on in Collier with the roadways, the sidewalk trails, but if a lot of people are going to go there and you get people that may want to go play golf at Plantation Palms, take a golf cart, how are they going to get out there? So, I mean, it's, it's, it's got issues.
I don't, I don't know what the subdivision is just south of this one. I'm looking at it.
Sable Ridge?
Yeah, Sable Ridge. You know, it, it don't, it, it's much larger than this one. This is a discussion we were having this morning. It's not about you guys, it's just amongst us and, and policies. I don't know why they didn't connect to Alpine Road or one of these other roads. So, I mean, they all have to come out on the, on the collector. There should be, they should have had more ways to connect to their neighbors. But alright, so it's public comment. Um, we will, I think we have an attorney who's got 15 minutes. Um, do you want to go first or last? Okay. And then we will have, uh, three minutes, uh, for those who, each for those who signed up, but we're going to ask you not to repeat, because there's an awful lot of you, not to repeat the same things your other people, the others have said. And so, one of the techniques you can use to not be repetitive is say, if, you know, if you agree with these statements, you can raise your hand or do something as a group, but we would ask you to not have 100 people come up here and say the same thing. That'd be 300 minutes of the same thing, and it's not always a good thing. Alright, you have 15 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Jane Graham, attorney and founder of Sunshine City Law, and I represent Mary Ann Bishop, a neighboring property owner and affected party. Today, KB Homes has the burden to prove with competent substantial evidence that they have met the Pasco County Land Development Code under 402.1, 402.2, and consistency with the comprehensive plan. It's not just parts of it, but all of the goals, policies, and objectives. Your Planning Commission rejected this proposal based on 13 different criteria. And I have them up here for you to look. It's, obviously I'm not going to read through them all, but it just takes one issue with one of the criteria to be rejected, since KB Homes has that burden. But it wasn't just one thing. And, uh, so there, there are lots of things going on. And the other thing before we get into this as well is that you were just talking about unanswered questions about the multi-use trail plan. Well, that's an insufficiency in their, um, their master plan, and, and under 402.2 C5B6, they need to provide a generalized mobility plan. And so, again, the fact that there is a burden to, to provide competent substantial evidence, that is on KB Homes. That's not on any of the objectors here today. After the Planning Commission's recommendation for denial, KB Homes tried to change their plan and add a new access point on Collier Parkway. I've provided a letter with several legal objections based on the fact that this substantial change bypassed the regular review procedure and omitted regular required elements of the master plan itself. And if, if I may, Madam Chair, if I could provide these legal objections right now as, as evidence.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Now, aside from these legal objections, KB Homes is actually directly contradicting what their engineer, Robert Fudge, said at the Planning Commission two months ago. An access on Collier doesn't work because it would conflict with the existing stormwater pond. Putting the access there means the water would run uphill, and the Planning Commission agreed. They have failed to provide any evidence today to show otherwise. The competent substantial evidence isn't there, so you must deny it. You are going to hear from Mrs. Bishop, who's lived on the neighboring property owner for over two decades with her family and transformed the land into not only a home, but a sustainability center. And you should know that my client has attempted to work with KB Homes to resolve her issues and be a good neighbor for months prior to being here today. She hired a traffic engineer, Drew Rourke, who uncovered several significant flaws in the earlier analysis, some of which were fixed, and then they have resurfaced. In the evidence submitted, you have both his November and August reports. Um, so Madam Chair, I have another packet of evidence I, I'd like to provide, and in that, I know it's a little dense, and I do apologize.
Motion to receive and file.
All in favor?
Can you just walk it over to?
So, um, I, yeah, so, and also I want you to know that the planning staff has refused to speak with my client and our team over the last few months to address the flaws in the proposal, despite numerous requests. My client is not anti-development. She actually owns a construction company.
Madam Chair, and I, I don't, you can stop. Can you just pull your mic a little closer? I'm, I'm kind of having, I see some people trying to hear you in the back.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. My client is not anti-development. She owns a construction company, actually, and she'd like to see a project that complies with the code and comp plan and protects the environmental integrity of Lake Rosebud and the environmental subregion connected to the Cypress Creek watershed. She'd also like a conservation easement over the lake, which the comprehensive plan actually requires based on the wetland density incentives which KB Homes has tried to claim. You will also hear from members of the community and representatives of a newly formed coalition of neighbors known as Hail Know that will speak to the ongoing infrastructure problems. And just, Pasco has an innovative code that directs growth in sustainable, environmentally sensitive, and safe ways. We urge you to follow your Planning Commission's recommendation to deny this and let KB Homes or someone else develop it based on the existing Euclidean zoning. And with that, I'm going to yield the rest of my presentation to Mary Ann, who's going to go through and, um, enter a few other things. And by the way, this is the site plan which has a couple of things that are missing, which are in the legal objections, so.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Uh, Mary Ann Bishop, 22843 Hale Road, Land O' Lakes, 34639.
And you have been sworn?
I have, I, with the whole group, yes.
You just have to state.
You all need to say that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You've been sworn. Thank you.
I think at the last meeting they made us. Okay, sorry. Uh, anyway, my name is Mary Ann.
Let me just say, I have been sworn as well.
Okay. Uh, my name is Mary Ann Bishop. Um, I, along with my husband Sonny, own that 19-acre parcel. I've lived here, as she told you, for over two decades. And I do support, like, the property includes the home and the educational center of Rosebud Continuum, which, uh, has a variety of agricultural uses, which is also, um, part of my, my issue, because, um, there, there needs to be, we have, we have property rights as an agricultural, um, production, but we have, um, I support the Planning Commission's recommendations to deny this application based on the 13 different criteria. Um, we recommend the property be developed using the existing zoning. Rosebud has a variety of agricultural uses, bee colonies, bat and birdhouses, alternative energy sources, uh, multiple things. We have an educational center that partners with schools and community organizations, plus we have hosted dignitaries from other countries who come to Rosebud to learn things from us. The continued water quality of Rosebud is extremely important. Um, it's a naturally occurring lake and category one wetland. It's been on the map since the oldest map we could find, 1847. We also rely on our well as an agricultural facility, and the quality of our well water is of utmost importance. I offered to buy the parcel with the lake, across the lake from KB Homes, and offered to buy it from them and put it in a conservation easement, because I want to protect the lake in perpetuity. Um, they rejected the offer. They did not come back with a, um, a counter offer. Um, so, uh, they're trying to benefit from the density of.
Madam Chair, if you mind?
Yeah.
Alright, sorry, I just won't hurt your time.
Okay.
Yeah, make sure that her time is close.
Can you get in a little more details? Can you show me, I need to know, I'd like to know what exact parcel that was, which, do you mind?
No, I don't mind. Um, the parcel.
You're saying it was?
There was a parcel.
The parcel was the pond.
Was it the whole?
Well, the parcel, that, that northern, that northwest, um, parcel is all lake and protected wetlands. So, it is an unbuildable, um, piece of property.
Okay, so not the whole, you weren't looking the, okay, so.
So, okay, um, I got to find me. Oh, we're up there. It's two, you need to, um, basically come down.
Okay, I see the, I see the lake, I see the Dupree Lakes. That's you, where, above where it says Class 3 Shadow Pines West? You're directly north of that?
North, up at the upper right-hand corner, where the lake is there. Um, it doesn't go all the way to the top.
Oh, I see, okay.
It doesn't, like, it needs to come down a little bit to see the whole piece, but if you'll see that parcel, um, it's Class 1 wetlands, which they have on their plan, that they want to put a walkway through it, which I highly, highly object to because of the sensitive nature of that wetlands. Um, it's dangerous for the wetlands. It's dangerous for the kids who may go there. It's dangerous for the water, like, the, the flood. That's, th- those roots, as was proven just the other day in our hurricane, that where the sea oats were replaced on the, on the beach, it protected the wa- the, the land. That's the same thing that these wetland plants do. And to have people be able to walk through that is not a good thing. But anyway, my thing was, I, I offered to buy it and put it into a conservation easement. And, and protect it as a conservation easement, as Dupree Lakes has done above it. And I want to do on our side of the lake. I basically want to protect the lake as the original owner of this property requested when we moved in. Um, Betty Franzell, who was the owner, she came over. You, you were talking about the, the, uh, the gasoline engines in the boat, in the lake. When we purchased that property, she came over and she said, "This has never had gasoline engines in it, and I don't want you to ever do it, and I don't want you to ever allow it." And I said, "I'm on board, and I'm trying to do that."
Well, thank you. I, I just was curious how much.
So, anyway, that was part of it, so, alright. So KB Homes' proposal is incompatible with the zoning of the surrounding properties, including mine, many of which are agriculturally zoned for rural and environmental uses. The staff's post-planning commission report fails to mention any of this or address surrounding agricultural and conservation, uh, uses. We have farm animals, which create noise and to some unpleasant smells. I don't want to have to endure the constant complaints from neighbors who are content to live in a neighborhood with minimal nature to, that find reasons to complain about what I'm legally able to do on my property. Just recently, a neighbor from up the road got in his car to try to find what he thought was a child screaming in pain, only to find out that one of my goats was ready for breakfast. For reference, my goats are always ready for breakfast. We also can't keep our bees from, and other pollinators from leaving our property, because we do raise bees and, and have honey, to go to a, a neighborhood that is so close that might be using insecticides that will, in fact, kill part of our crop. The surrounding lot sizes are all much larger. Um, you can see here what the lot sizes are up and down Hale. We're a very established, long-established neighborhood, as opposed to a lot of the new developments that are going on on large pieces of property. This is like trying to fit in something that, that is, that doesn't fit. Um, it's been stated that I'm not a good neighbor by Representative KB Homes. I dispute that. I've been able to work with developers around my property before to come to an agreement. Here's a letter from Ben Harrell, representing Beezer Homes for Dupree Lakes, which was built in 2003, where they agreed to eliminate the 40 and 45-foot lots. Uh, they reduced the amount from 1,100 and something to 745, all by sitting down and having discussions prior to even going to the Planning Commission. Uh, I have the letters stating that we all are in agreement, we're going to move forward. Uh, Dupree Lakes is, I'm still in, always in contact with it. If there's community issues, we work together. Um, they put the property on the north side of the lake into a conservation easement. Um, we, we'd like for that other part of the, KB Homes to do that same thing, uh, if they build. Road safety is a major issue. I'm going to let that go, because I know other people have a lot of information on that. Don't want to have to, uh, go through. So, anyway, I want to say that I'm disappointed that I personally had to hire a traffic expert to speak with KB Homes after spotting a few significant issues in their substandard road analysis. KB Homes ultimately had to agree and significantly changed their work. Pasco County staff was given the same information and did not raise the issue. I'm sure you agree that it is unacceptable that as a private citizen, I should bear the burden to make sure that these reports are adequately reviewed. I would like you to, in your packet, you'll get, uh, the latest November 8th report from the land planner, I mean, the, the traffic expert that I had to hire again regarding the Collier Road exit. And he says, uh, "It appears that Collier Parkway is part of the cost feasible plan to be widened to four lanes. The planned widening is shown as going to four-lane divided highway, which means it will have a median. The minimum full medium access, which would be required for their left turns out on Collier, is 660 feet. Therefore, based on the planned improvement on Collier Parkway, this access would not meet the access management standards." So I encourage you to review the, the traffic consultant that I've hired. Uh, his, his report will be in your packet. So after the, um, let's see, what's, we talked about them pushing that, like, where they're wanting, at the Planning Commission, they continue to talk about right in and right out. If you go back and listen to that, that's all they talked about, the, the Collier Parkway entrance exit, sorry, um, being right in and right out, because of the, the close access to Hale Collier and to the Sable Ridge exit. If that's the case, and that's what ends up happening, that will do nothing but add more traffic to Hale, because everybody will have to come down Hale to turn right, to turn right, to get in there. So, um, anyway, let me see what else I got here. I'm a little nervous here. Okay, um, bottom line, I'm asking you to listen to your Planning Commission. They rejected this application. My neighbors and I have private property rights, and your decisions today must follow the criteria to hold developers accountable so that the burden is not passed on to your residents, both through tax, but also the potential of flooding and further infrastructure disruption. We want to be good neighbors, and KB Homes says they want to be good neighbors as well. To do this, KB Homes should follow the recommendation to develop under the existing zoning. Thank you.
Got everything?
And actually, I know if there, there's one thing, since we have four minutes to sum up. I've heard the applicant repeatedly say, "Well, we have a land use, um, we, you know, our, our designation for future land use is residential six, so we can build all the way to the highest density." If you look at Future Land Use Element Appendix A-42 of the Comprehensive Plan, it says, "A property owner is not entitled to all zoning classifications or the most potentially dense or intense zoning classification within a land use classification. In some cases, the application of zoning subdivision, environmental, and other regulations may result in actual project density less than the maximum permitted by the Comprehensive Plan. The Future Land Use Map does not guarantee that maximum densities will be achieved in all cases and does not serve as a substitute density limit in place of any other regulations that would place further restrictions and/or limitations on the development of density of a parcel." So I, I do want to leave you with that, that, you know, this is a decision that you have today to make. You're going to hear from all sorts of members of the immediate community in the neighborhood who have specific observations, which I would also like to remind you, if, if you have a layperson testimony on a specific observation, that is competent substantial evidence. So I, I ask you to listen, and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, so.
Do you want to go through the list, or do you want them just to, do you want me to go through the list, or do you want them to come up?
Um, once you call the first five people.
Okay.
And then we'll have you line up.
Alright, I have Emery Bragg, followed by Richard Valdez, followed by Joyce Bragg. Drew Royke or Royke?
Madam Chair, before this fourth speaker, she's handing documents, so let me say, move to receive and file.
I think we already did that motion, I just didn't come in.
Well, we need to move.
So move to receive and file.
All in favor? Aye.
So Drew Royke, Debbie Martinez, and Valerie Van Stronder.
Oh, actually, Drew Rourke was our traffic engineer, but he's unable to come right now, so.
Okay.
Okay. Emery Bragg? Thank you. Name and address and whether or not you've been sworn.
Say it again?
Name, address, and whether you've been sworn. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Emery Bragg, residing at 21842 Hale Road. That's about a quarter mile from 41 on Hale Road.
And you have been sworn. And you have been sworn.
I have.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hale Road is a substandard road, which has narrow width and strong curves. Ditches, lake canals, mailboxes, fences, power poles within a couple of feet from the road. Drivers have enough to watch out for, and adding of more traffic is not, is what my fault, is not too smart. On July 16th, on this year, a motorist knocked down 167 feet of my fence. It's no longer good. Also destroyed a power pole in front of my home. After hitting the pole, it finally stopped by crashing into my neighbor's fence. You need the Florida Highway, if you need the Florida Highway incident number, I got it. I see bringing in this many of new dwellings will destroy the ambience we have moved here for. Three more poles were just added near the accident site, and they are very close, such as two feet. The new Circle K at the end of 41, uh, at Hale Road, it just had its fence crashed into. First home from 41 on South Side has been hit many times. I believe if allowing this kind of a project is established in neighborhoods, will be the demise of the small-town neighborhood. Hale Road is a substandard and dangerous. Please note how your own experts from the Pasco County Engineering Services Design Division described Hale Road on the last page of its February 2004 Bell Lake Road Extension Route Study. Quote, "An extremely narrow roadway, roadway with substandard geometric curvatures without shoulders or adequate drainage, all of which is compounded with the extent school bus traffic," unquote. And conditions have only gotten worse since 2001.
You have another minute?
One minute left.
And conditions have only gotten worse since 2004, with all the additional traffic created by the many new housing units that have been added to the area in the last 18 years. And the extension of Collier to, they're in cutoff, and the closure of Bell Lake Road to truck traffic. There are about 50 utilities. There are about 50 utility poles in or right on the edge of the required six-foot clear zone next to the pavement, some located around severe curves that many people take way too fast. And that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, and I had pictures. I got myself.
Richard Valdez?
Richard E. Valdez, 22644 Sills Loop in Land O' Lakes, Florida. I've been sworn in, and I'm going to switch it up a little bit, if you don't mind. The thing about it is, is that I've moved from Tampa years ago into this area, and seemed like the inner city came and followed me over. Now, the thing about it is, is that I'm not going to go too much more into detail on that. But we, I have a chart on there, if you don't mind. I think it was a fire station response. There it is, right there. The, it moved right on with me, and I also serve on the HOA Board of Sable Ridge. The thing about it is, is that we have substandard response times. If you can see, this year, February, January and February of this year, we have response times for ambulance, for first responders. First responders almost took three hours for response because they had no ambulances available. They had none whatsoever at those particular days. Now, that is unacceptable to me. Now, if we don't set any allocations for, allocations for first responders, fire stations, and also the sheriff's office, I think it was back in March when Sheriff Narcol asked for 400 more deputies to share in the responsibility to patrol these areas of concern, Hale Road, Bell Lake, Collier Parkway. Now, whatever you can do, I mean, it was substandard because we don't have any more additional substations for the sheriffs. We didn't allocate or any type of, any type of money to, for our first responders and our law enforcement to come in and to patrol these areas. Now, we're talking about, we're talking about widening roads and going down there and widening roads. You can widen them all up, but guess what? What you're going to have is you're going to make them into nothing but drag strips for these teenagers. And if you add any more problems to this, even to this day, he wanted 400 for the standard of this time, much less adding more to the responsibility of our residents to protect our own property and to protect our own lives. And the response time also, when I also dealing with the sheriffs, with the HOA Board, they were, their response time, even on the, even on the non-emergency number, was over 45 minutes to an hour. That response times, they didn't have anybody in the area. They had to pull them off of someplace else. So, that's it.
Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Madam Chair. Can I just?
Very quick.
Okay. Just addressing what he had brought up, over, that was in February, there was a peak over those few months. It actually went from 17 down to 13 down in May. It was down to six days out of the month that there was the utilization, that we were having less ambulances. But that three-hour mark was accumulative throughout the entire day, but as of May, there was only six days out of the month, and they were all less than accumulative 30 minutes per day. And we've also added two new ambulances for peak hour times on September 19th, and we're adding two additional peak hour ambulances to help address your concerns.
And our sheriff does do substations, and we gave, in his budget this year, money for 40, is 40 more deputies, so. He's got money for 40 more deputies, so.
We're not, we can't go back and forth.
Okay. Yeah, but we're not going to go back and forth. Okay, so.
Joyce Bragg.
And could you ask, give me three more names to line up there, please?
Joyce Bragg, Drew Royke, Debbie Martinez, Valerie Van Stronder.
My name is Joyce Bragg. I live on 21842 Hale Road, Land O' Lakes. And I sent in a presentation.
And you were sworn in. Please be sure to say if you were sworn in or not.
What?
Were you sworn in? Did you?
Were you sworn in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
On Friday, November 4th, around 6:45 a.m., a garbage truck was attempting to back into Tamley Lane from Hale Road. The truck failed to complete the sharp turn where the narrow dirt road drops into a ditch on both sides, leaving it stuck in the ditch. Many other vehicles have gotten stuck in the same location, including cars, pickup trucks, trucks with boats on trailers, and even tree trunk that was entering Tamley to clear a lot. This location is the school bus stop where Land O' Lakes High School students have been picked up just half an hour before. There is no lighting in the area. The way this garbage truck got stuck blocked Hale Road, making it impassable for, from either direction. Cars coming from the east and west were turned down to Deer Hound Road, but cars from in the east had no place to pull over or turn around. Once traffic started backing up, some pickup trucks started turning around in the grass on the side of the road in front of the retention pond for the all-safe subdivision. Cars tried to follow with one barely making it. Another car attempted to cross the grass to get to Deer Hound, but got stuck in the ditch, signaling other cars to stop trying. A school bus coming from the east tried to turn around in front of the pond, but also got stuck. A Pasco deputy arrived on the scene and gave an event number, but explained there wouldn't be a report because there wasn't technically a vehicle crash. This happens often, resulting in an underreporting of incidents on substandard Hale Road. Two tow trucks arrived on the scene. A larger one pulled the truck, garbage truck, out first. Another deputy arrived on the road, was blocked in order for it to pull out the school bus. The smaller tow truck pulled the stuck vehicle out at Deer Hound, ending the ordeal nearly two hours after it had begun. By this time, Middle, Pineview Middle School students, Connerton Elementary students, Sanders Memorial Elementary students, and Imagine Charter School students would have been waiting at the same corner for buses. Other Pineview Middle School students would have been walking around, walking down Hale Road as they have no longer received courtesy busing. It may not always be a garbage truck and a school bus, but it is commonplace for vehicles to get stuck or crash. The majority of the time, there is no report made. Tow trucks are called, but law enforcement isn't present. Just a few short months ago, my own fence was badly damaged when a car careened off the road, driving right through it. A few days ago, emergency services were called to 22333 Hale Road, just east of the incident. If Hale Road is blocked as it is, was, as it was on November 4th, there is no way for emergency services to get through. Clearly, from pictures, they can't go through the grass, and there is no shoulder, no shoulder. Hale Road is substandard.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am?
That's your time.
Okay.
Thank you. And where are the other people that we, whose names we called?
Drew Royke, I don't know if he's here yet. Debbie Martinez.
Yeah, but I wanted to call four or five names so they're lined up.
Valerie Van Stronder, Lily, is it Zoo? Mary Combs, April Wakefield.
If you could line up behind there, please, if you want to speak. Thanks. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Deborah Martinez. I live at 22559 Hale Road, and I was sworn in.
Thank you.
My property is adjacent to where the 12 homes are going to be built, or 15 homes. I haven't gotten a clear message yet. Directly by my house, I mailed everyone out in the commission, my presentation today because I knew that I was only given three minutes and I wasn't going to get through this. But I do want to clue in on a couple of things. You'll see up on this board some real conditions that happened on Hale Road. The young lady in front, ahead of me, did say that a lot of things weren't reported, and that's true. Where we live, my son lives directly in front of me on that property, and they frequently pull out cars and trucks out of ditches there. The latest one, you'll see a crash there. She didn't realize that there was a ditch with water in it because the grass was grown in water, and so she got stuck, and that happens often. I have personally been privy to accidents that have happened in that road to my family. I know they don't count what happens on Hale and Collier, or Hale and 41, but I'm going to tell you, a young lady distracted, turning on to Hale to take the shortcut, her words, to 41, crashed into my niece, totaled her car. My niece, her husband, and my two great nieces, ages seven and four, were taken by ambulance to the hospital. Terrible accident. My niece is still recovering. The little ones still have panic attacks, and her husband still has issues from the accident. So yes, maybe it wasn't on Hale, she was turning on to Hale. So yes, those accidents do happen. And I have many more listed in this document, and you'll see many more here that happened. The schools, walking, these kids scare me to death in the morning. They're walking on a road, on the road, because they can't walk in the ditches or on the water. And they, cars are passing them, literally, I have some pictures where there are just barely enough room to get by. And these kids are walking in the dark in the morning, sometimes they're in the afternoon. It's not a good situation on Hale Road. There's too many cars on there now. The flooding that occurs in my home, which you'll also see on this video, is already significant. We realize that. There were orange groves that had to be removed, so we left plenty of property between my sons and my home so that water could evaporate and go away. We still have standing water. Right next to it is where they want to bring in all these homes. I asked a gentleman at the first meeting, and they said this wasn't true, but he's sitting right there with the glasses, and I said, "I already have flooding if you put all these houses." And his worst to me, where we are bringing in 10 or 15 feet of fill. So we'll grade it off so it flows away from your house. What? 10 or, I mean, I know.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I just.
Okay. Come on up.
Before I begin, do I enter, can I enter this into the record? It's communications from the floor.
Say again.
Okay, I didn't hear what she said, but, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Speak into that mic.
My name is Valerie Van Stronder. I have been sworn in. I live at 22240 Hale Road.
Very good.
This plan is not consistent with our way of life. Most of us have large properties, summer zone for agriculture. We have chickens, goats, and horses on this road. I live on about a half an acre, and my yard is one of the smallest on Hale. There are no 40 to 50-foot lots on Hale. Commissioner Starky, at the October 11th meeting, you mentioned Commissioner Moore that you plan to take a drive through our area. I'm glad that you were able to do that. You also expressed a lack of enthusiasm for 40-foot lots while maintaining they have their place. Well, this isn't it. And at the September 22nd hearing with the planning commission, Mr. Moody said, "I'm done with 40-foot lots and I'm done with 50-foot lots." Mr. Williams agreed, saying, "I don't like the 40 and 50-foot lots either." This is a rural community. I'm a native of Land O' Lakes. Most of us live here for the green space, rural charm, and country feel. Land O' Lakes used to truly represent Pasco's open spaces, vibrant places, but we're in danger of losing it because some people think green spaces are just donuts waiting to be filled. Now, I'm not anti-development. I just believe property rights should exist for everyone impacted, and all of us who live in the area will be negatively affected by this. We should matter too, not just the sellers and those who stand the profit. I have developers, brokers, and attorneys in my immediate family who make a living from development here in Pasco. I respect what they do. I appreciate hospitals, roads, and good food, but I also appreciate a quick response time when I call 911. We have such a shortage of 911 operators, first responders, teachers, and bus drivers that they've considered calling in the National Guard. We can't even sustain our current population. I used to work at Connerton Elementary, which is the district where I live, though it's seven miles away, while Pineview Elementary is just two. One of the reasons for these boundaries is overcrowding. Most of the schools in our area have portables. Nobody wants their child to have to walk through the rain to switch classes, go to lunch, or go to the bathroom. And unfortunately, we have to recognize the modern danger kids face in a portable during an active shooter situation. Due to shortages, we also have kids walking almost two miles to school in the elements. In our area, that means without a sidewalk or any safe place to walk. The ditches on Hale are impassable due to flooding and weeds, so these kids have no choice but to walk in the middle of the road. In the planning hearing, Mr. Girardi questioned whether it was worth one kid and admitted not if it was his. Well, not mine either. And are kids going to be crossing Hale to get from one of these parts of the neighborhood to the other if there's parks? Because that's not going to be safe. We have developments going up all around us, including under a mile from the proposed development. As an Army veteran, I appreciate tunnels to towers, but I feel for the Gold Star Moms that will have to send their kids to school on foot over a mile away because they have to work and we have no buses. We just don't have the infrastructure to sustain this growth right now. I've contacted the Pasco County School Board requesting input. They've shared data regarding school capacity, busing, and shortages. As you can see from the data, all the schools and the relevant boundaries are frozen for school choice, which effectively means there is no choice. We have 49 bus driver shortages. The so-called solution to this problem eliminates 152 courtesy rides for Pineview Middle School students and 161 for Land O' Lakes High School. Buses are still full. They're late nearly every day before and after school. I can't get a clear answer as to whether courtesy buses will be available for elementary next year. There must be a better solution. Although the school board has been helpful in providing answers to some of my questions, I'm still waiting for response to others. For instance, the data shows relatively small numbers for the projection of new students. It is imperative that all these new developments be included in the counts, but it doesn't appear the numbers reflect that. In the planning commission hearing on September 22nd regarding this input, Mr. Williams reported a projected number of 20 elementary students, 11 middle school students, and 14 high school students just for this development. If that's the count from this one new development, how do the numbers provided by the school board account for all of the new developments? Aaron Mill, Pristine Lake, Banjo Lake, the data doesn't make sense. How can you make decisions based on incomplete data? Please listen to the recommendations of your planning commission. As Mr. Moody said, you don't have to approve every input application. This development is unsafe, incompatible, inconsistent, unsustainable, and underplanned. I respectfully request that you just deny this input.
All right. Thank you. She got a lot in. No. I'm sorry, but you can't do that in here.
Madam Chair.
And that's why we have bailiffs here, so no clapping and noises from the stairs.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I think we found someone who would talk faster than Mike Moore and Denise.
She absolutely got a lot in. Probably no one else has a speech.
The option ears. That's funny.
Good afternoon. My name is Lily Zoo, and I have not been sworn in, nor have my two classmates, who will be speaking for two minutes.
Okay, we're going to stop for a second. Anyone who wants to speak and hasn't been sworn in, you need to raise your hand, and we're going to swear, and everybody who has not otherwise will be here till tomorrow. Okay, that's it? Okay.
Okay, go ahead and stand if you're going to be sworn in. Okay? Please raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I do. I do.
Okay. Hub it in the back. I didn't hear you.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
You may proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Lily Zoo, and I live on 19245 Falcon Crest Boulevard. I'd like to start by thanking you for watching our previous meeting with the Planning Commission Board. We, as students, appreciate our opportunity for our voices to be heard. It is an honor to represent those of the over 2,000 student stakeholders at Land O' Lakes High School next to Hale Road. Our team has researched our county's land development code, and thus, we would like to briefly share some of our observations with its inconsistencies in relation to this rezoning. I would also like to share that personally, I am an aspiring scientist and current Scientific Journal Club president who wants to commit myself for our future, and I would like to thank all county scientists, the planning commissioners, and Mr. Moore and Mr. Taylor for our conference call. From contact with the Southwest Florida Water Management District, there are currently no data collection stations nor permit for the lake by the continuum yet. Land O' Lakes High School is right near Hale Road with over 2,260 students as the biggest school of our county. With new, heavy daily congestion, I speak with the strained teachers and staff who work very hard every day to make sure us students' needs are addressed. This picture does not come close to the severely strained infrastructure. Three years ago, as a freshman living two miles from school, 2.5 miles from school, it took about seven minutes to get to school in the morning. It is now over 20 minutes. I am concerned for the safety of not just myself, my peers, and my staff of our school, but also in our community, as evacuations and emergency situations may become more difficult. During our fire drills, the crowding in the hallway crams us together. Every day, many of us have to take detour routes from the back of the school by the dumpsters and parking lot to get, to get to most of our classes because of the crowded by the dumpsters and parking lot to get, to get to most of our classes because of the crowded hallways. Much more personal and concerning experiences of safety are contained in the two hundred student letters I have sent you. We would like to see all inconsistencies with criteria four oh two point one and four oh two point two of the Pasco Land Development Code completely resolved. I also spend hours at a time with my classmates by Hale Road on the Rosebud Continuum's property. Its unique, value-growing character, proximity to the natural lake, and the neighboring historical longleaf pine habitat have made it unique. As we Pasco students volunteer and learn about nature, we view the sensitive species the Rosebud had worked for years upon years to preserve, such as the South American kestrel and the diverse bats and gardens with novel research. There, we are able to pursue our curiosities and dreams for a better future. I would like to see proof today that all criteria of the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code are met thoroughly. I hope to be part of the movement for a solution. I trust that the decision for the integrity and prioritization of our safety and future will be made today. Thank you for listening to our voices.
Wow. Thank you. Good job. Okay, next.
Mary Combs.
Supposed to receive a file.
On favor?
Aye.
Do you want to say something more?
I have two classmates who are scheduled to come.
Oh, you want to be in sequence?
Yes.
Are you trying to be in sequence? Do you guys mind? Okay, they should be in line.
All right. Next, we have Ajinkya.
Just a second. Okay, if you guys have like a rolling presentation, you need to be in line one after the other.
Can I start?
Name and address, and then for the record that you've been sworn.
My name is Ajinkya Bardoj. I live at 3510 Hickory Hammock Loop, Wesley Chapel, and I have been sworn in. As a student driver, my friends and I, including friends from sports teams and buses, know the extent to which infrastructure is congested. When I do have to take the bus home, it is overcrowded. The bus fills up in a matter of minutes. My friends and I often have to squeeze in three to a seat, although the bus seats are only made for two people. Furthermore, sometimes we even have to sit on the floor of the bus because of a lack of seats. This really impacts our learning environment and quality of life as a student. As a young driver, I was planning on going through Hale Road in order to reach my school faster, but my parents have not allowed me to. Citing section four oh two point one E six and four oh two point two F two in the Pasco County Land Development Code, the congestion resulting from the development may result in higher traffic on Hale Road, which is a one-way, a one-lane road. With higher traffic on the one-lane road, I fear prob, the probability of an accident occurring will increase. Knowing that some of my friends and even some of the buses from my school use Hale Road, I worry for their safety. As I said before, this isn't just my grievance, but that of many students in Land O' Lakes evident by the letters we have received regarding the same issue. I am by no means against development, however, I would like to also see this development completely meet all the criteria of the Pasco Land, Pasco County Land Development Code as a student stakeholder. I look forward to carefully planned decisions to allow for the brightest outlooks of every member of our community and land use. Thank you for your consideration on this important, important subject.
Sir, did you sign up? I just want to make sure I check your name off.
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, I just didn't. I want to make sure I get through everyone.
Hello, my name is Rashad Chanvass, and I'm from 2551 Rosehaven.
We'll need you to speak up, please.
Okay, um, hello, my name is Rashad Chanvass, and I'm from 2551 Rosehaven Drive, Wesley Chapel.
And I saw that you stood, but you have to say it for the record that you were sworn.
Oh, yes, and I have been sworn in, sorry.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, hello, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk today. I am a Land O' Lakes High School senior and vice president of the Scientific Journal Club. As an aspiring doctor who is passionate about people and our surrounding, our safety, and our health is the basis, basis and foundation of our lives, I know friends' parents who work for the sheriffs and health departments near Hale and Land O' Lakes, and the strain, and the strain these systems are under must be helped. As a student who's lived in Pasco County for all of my life, I've come to very much love the nature and the wildlife that it contains. Our surroundings, the lakes, the wildlife, and all of us are interconnect, interconnected one way or the other. This is of great value to everyone. Everyone I know and talk to greatly loves the wetlands, lakes, cypresses, anyone from young children to old retired veterans who have served for our country and our, um, safety. And as I read their letters for you, I realize this further. I personally also love the fresh air, quiet scenery, and clear lake of Rosebud Continuum. I feel that the Rosebud is one of the remaining environmental oases in this sprawling county. With high-density development possibly coming to this location, I fear that it will greatly affect the environment, um, animals, and people living here. For example, in wiregrass, I saw that as the population increased, so did the number of, um, roadkill and other, um, yeah, roadkill. I hope that the lakes and endangered and non-endangered animals and fauna at the Rosebud Continuum is protected. Overall, like the other student stakeholders, I would like to see all criteria met for our best decisions. And I would like to end our school's message on a positive and hopeful note. Thank you, and goodbye.
Thank you. Good job. Now I had a presentation.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, hi. I'm Mary Combs. I live at 22715 NEF Court. That's in Sable Ridge, and I have been sworn in. In a nutshell, our infrastructure we have now is broken, and there are a number of issues involved. Sable Ridge, if you look at some of these, has expanding road depressions, repeated open holes in the roads and easements, and bursts and leaking underground pipes. An example is when a neighbor stepped through the pavement while playing football. The county fixed it in two thousand nineteen, and this summer, a hole opened up in the road again in the same location. Just on my street alone, there's been five places where road crews have had to come out and repair underground pipes. Pasco Stormwater said the entire street needs to have piping replaced. Sable Ridge residents on the south side of Hale Road are already having multiple problems with displaced water issues due to land being elevated, um, on neighboring streets. This has caused flooding, soil erosion, and standing water in yards largely due to misplaced, displaced water. With our current drainage problems, where's the overflow from the new construction going to go? And who takes responsibility in the model they choose to use even would cause more flooding and erosion? Excuse me. KB Homes now plans to put their southern exit onto Collier. This will undoubtedly create a dangerous bottleneck on Collier and a tremendous amount of frustrated drivers who solely exit out of the streets and subdivisions by turning onto Collier. As it is now, you oftentimes have to gun it to try to merge onto Collier. With heavy school bus traffic on Collier, frustrated drivers have been seen going around stopped school buses that had their lights out and their lights flashing in the sign out. This is not acceptable. I received an email from angry mother who cannot be here today that said that she started using her phone to video cars and trucks as they're passing buses that have stopped to load and unload students. Unfortunately, we do not have enough sheriffs to patrol nor enough bus drivers to accommodate our students. Megan Harding on the school board recently stating that, uh, lack of school bus drivers is a huge safety issue. Another issue I'd like to address is the available and cost of reclaimed water. When reclaimed water is low, especially during a drought, lack of water pressure puts strains on everyone in a deep-restricted subdivision, like Sable Ridge, that has lawn requirements. Increased demands on these will have a negative impact on the surrounding areas. Because of our current infrastructure problems and not wanting to make a bad situation worse, we respectfully submit that you deny the rezoning request for Hale Road. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got April Wakefield, followed by Dick Candelaro, Betty Candelaro, Mike Della Penna, and Dani Martinez.
I'm April.
Oh, she's got some documents.
Move to receive.
Say.
All in favor?
Okay. My name is April Wakefield. I live at 3545 Lake Paget Drive, Land O' Lakes, Florida. My parents bought in nineteen seventy in Lake Paget. I returned, left there as an adult, came back, live there now. I have been sworn in. I've cut this up quite a bit, but, um, basically, as we've discussed, there are conditions on Hale Road that, uh, and Collier that are a great concern. And just moving it to Collier is not eliminating or alleviating the problem because people are going to cut down Hale to get to Forty-One. That's the fastest route. On, um, it is especially dangerous, either Hale or Collier during the traffic, school traffic times and peak times. Collier Parkway is a two-lane road all the way up to Hale to just south of Parkway Boulevard, um, on and off sidewalks. Uh, the proposal to add an ingress egress onto Collier is especially grievous as most of the streets and subdivisions along Collier only have one exit. We all exit onto Collier. So, getting in and out in an event of an emergency, a disaster, or any other situation, or getting, uh, emergency vehicles in there becomes a difficult time when you're so backed up. The pictures that I handed out show off-peak times, not school times, regular times. I'm driving down the street, and it's backed up. So, the proposal, I already read that, okay. Um, parents are even standing out in the street during times to get their kids on and off of the school bus acting as crossing guards because there's no, nobody there, and the cars are going so fast. Um, a student, we don't want to be like Pinellas County where a student in Largo in a small subdivision was killed in August going to the school bus stop. So, um, it's, it's very, very dangerous. And as you mentioned earlier, Madam Chairman, this is a huge road grid issue and a concern for the entire community because this is a small road, and it has hundreds of developments going into it, not hundreds, but nearly. Um, this includes developments that will use Collier Parkway, uh, tunnels to towers, the ban, tunnels to, for towers, the Banjo Lake Development, Alpine Road and Bell Lake Development, Pristine Lakes, Aaron Mills, and the multitude of other developments off of Aaron Road. Uh, the residents and, uh, of Depre Lakes, Wilderness Lakes, and Calente already use Collier and Fifty-four and Hale to exit th, those two areas. Uh, the traffic is unbelievable. It is out of control. And providing another approval for another development is adding more traffic. Um, I respectfully request and implore you to deny the Hale rezoning request and do not make any further decision that will make our situation worse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, do you have school listed? Oh, thank you.
Uh, there's a school around the corner. I was emailing the school district. There's those sidewalks there. Um, let me put my back back up. Go ahead.
I'm Dick Candelaro. I live on Pineywood Loop, a dead-end street off Hale Road. I have been sworn. The planning commission recommended that you deny this project because it violates thirteen different sections of the LDC and the comp plan. The developer made a change to the project after that denial, but it makes the situation worse. The change is moving the access for the homes that lie south of Hale Road from Hale to Collier Parkway. You've heard a lot about the traffic-related problems. Two new left-hand turns are going to have to be made on Collier. What you haven't been told about is that it creates a serious drainage problem. To accommodate the Collier access, the drainage pond has to be moved from its natural location at the lowest point on the property to a higher point further south. Now, KB Homes didn't propose this. It was brought up by Attorney Goldstein during the planning commission hearing. And when the KB Homes representative was asked about it, he said that the engineers that they had hired from Florida Land Design had, and I quote, "looked at that and ruled that out due to wetland impacts and the limited frontage and the spacing requirements of the code." When Mr. Goldstein persisted, the KB Homes engineers and the two engineers on the planning commission, Mr. Moody and Mr. Girardi, pointed out you need to have the drainage pond at the lowest point on the property because that's where water flows. The KB Homes engineer said moving the pond from its present location would reduce its ability to capture drainage because you're trying to move water uphill. He also said moving the pond would disrupt its connection to the natural drainage system of the area. Now, this change creates three problems. The one supposed benefit is minimal. They are only projecting a ten percent reduction in the number of their cars going from their project to State Road Forty-One. They made it sound like they're not going to be using anyone Forty-One. If you look at their new projection, it used to be fifty percent of the cars going there. Now, it's forty percent. It's only a ten percent reduction, and even that is unsupported. The forty percent reduction is based on a discredited study, which after we pointed out the problems with it, they reverted back, they did a new one and made it up to fifty percent. Why they went back to the forty percent, I don't know. They don't give a reason. They, they just say it's because we moved the access, but they don't say why moving the access would change the percentages at all. So, in short, an unacceptable project has been made worse, and it should be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, call up, uh, three more people after.
All right. Um, I believe this is Betty Candelaro. We have Mike Della Penna, followed by Dani Martinez, Denna, uh, is it? Merce Mariki? Marisi, thank you.
Betty Candelara, two one eight six zero Pineywood Loop. I have been sworn. Um, my street intersects Hale Road. Flu one point ten of the comp plan says a property owner is not entitled to the most potentially dense or intense zoning classification within a land use designation. Rather, a number of factors must be evaluated to determine whether the proposed project is appropriate for the parcel, including existing uses of land and existing development patterns and approved development in the area. This project should be rejected because the proposed lot widths of forty to fifty feet are much smaller than the lot widths in the existing developments that have been approved in the area. At the planning commission meeting, I testified that I had reviewed the map on the property appraiser's website and counted eight subdivisions that have been approved along Hale Road. They contain a hundred and fifty-seven lots, which are all at least eighty feet wide. Uh, during rebuttal, the developer's representatives said Sable Ridge, the subdivision to the south on Collier Parkway, should also be considered since it backs up to the subject property. So, I looked at those lots on the property appraiser's website. They average at least sixty feet in width. This shows that the existing pattern of development for the area entails lots which average seventy feet wide. In stark contrast, the average width of a lot in the proposed project is forty-five feet. They want to cram three homes into the space where the existing approved projects only have two. This is inconsistent with the approved development pattern in the area and therefore conflicts with the review criteria in the Land Development Code. Requiring wider, therefore fewer, lots is particularly critical since, as you've heard, Hale Road is substandard two-lane roadway, which is already dangerous. The map on the screen shows where my street, Pineywood. It's, it's, it's the gray road on the top. Um, it's a dirt road where it intersects with, with Hale. Um, people on Hale can't see me when I pull out. It's such a sharp angle there and a curve. They can't see me when I pull out, and I can't see them until they come around the bend. So, if you add five hundred trips per day, and you will cre, create about a hundred and eighty thousand opportunities per year for serious injury or worse. Flu one point ten says you should not let development get ahead of the infrastructure. Approving one hundred and nine new housing units would do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Della Penn. I live at two three zero zero five Mayfair Road in Lake Paget East. I've lived there for thirty-two years, and yes, I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just basically, uh, I work in Tampa most of the time. Three times in the last three months, I've been on Forty-One going south from Hale Road because I take Hale Road out to Forty-One all the time. And, um, the traffic has been backed up to the Circle K. So, we all know, or at least I believe you know, that Forty-One and Fifty-four intersection is a disaster. And at the planning commission meeting, um, I stated I didn't think that any more developments should be approved, period, until the roads are improved, in particular, Collier Parkway. Now, the reality of it all is, is this. Collier Parkway was supposed to be widened in two thousand and twenty-four. At the planning meeting, somebody in the planning group said that Hale Road wasn't on the list of having anything done to improve it until two thousand and forty. Uh, I don't see that happening, and I probably won't be around when it does. But to Mr. Oakley's point, uh, until recently, we had three cars. And to get in and out of our driveway, we had to park, you know, either on the street or in the yard. In deep-restricted communities, somebody will come along, you'll get a letter, and you shouldn't, shouldn't do that. So, to Mrs. Starkey's point, um, you know, it's the same thing. Collier is going to be widened now. I understand there's been a virus, and things have been pushed back. It's understandable. It's causing problems everywhere. And then, last but not least, you know, once again, to Commissioner Moore's, um, statement about a teenager driving, he's probably got the. a teenager driving, he's probably got the same issues with cars and movement around too. So that's all I have to say. The traffic coming south on 41 is a disaster, more often than not. Three cut-through points, Aaron Cut Off, where the tunnels-to-tower project is going, Hale Road, which is, you know, what we're talking about is a dangerous road, we know, and then Bell Lake. That traffic is all going to converge on Collier Parkway, and I see it eventually, if they do any construction there, going through Lake Paget and going down Parkway to get, you know, pass the construction. So you're going to have people speeding through our neighborhood eventually. It's got to happen. So I just think you're making a mistake if you approve this project because it's, we need to stop somewhere and have some common sense and plan for the future, and that includes infrastructure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Danny Martinez. I live on 22559 Hale Road. I have been sworn in, and I am a retired 30-year fire captain, because I have something to say about this coming out. I need to enter these signed petitions in.
Please proceed.
Five seconds.
On favor? Aye.
My game plan sort of changed now that we're going to go ahead and put this out now on Collier. What's going on in the corner there of Collier and Hale Road? That's going to go commercial, I'm telling you. Where's it going to go on with that pond that they're going to put a road right through to go on to Collier? We're going to move that pond, okay? That exit is really close to that intersection, okay? That's trouble. Next thing, there's one, they're showing one exit on the Collier, right next to that intersection, 68-plus homes, again, retired fire captain. I'm here to tell you that one entrance and exit to the development like that is not good. That is dangerous. Now I'll go to my part. Again, let's keep in mind what's going to happen in that corner, because they're holding that piece out, I'm telling you. All right? Hale Road is a substandard road, we all know that. The kids are walking to the buses. There is no infrastructure. As you all know, the fire station in the corner is not a fire station. It is a supply division for Pasco County Fire. So there is not a fire station there. Closest fire station is up on 56 or 54, long ways. So don't think that fire station is open, it is closed. I measured the roads. The road is eight foot wide. My lawn trailer is a little over eight feet. Those school buses are right there. And if you'll see, these school buses are straddling that double line coming down the We got 30 to 40 at least traveled school buses a day on that road, at least, dropping kids off. We've got three places to drop off, pick up for school kids. Look at this young lady. Look at that. Would you want your kid to walk with that? Because there it is. And that's in the daytime. She got out of school. Imagine that girl walking at 6:30 in the morning at night by that pole. Look, there they are, they're at night, getting on the bus, crossing the street, getting on the bus, all those cars behind it. I know now we're going to move this thing now to Collier, but I'm here to tell you, unloading all these houses, these people on that Collier, so close to that intersection, and folks, I am going to predict that that corner is going commercial, and there will be a 7-Eleven, gas station, something that's going to be right next to that exit, that exit of that subdivision. How are we going to do that? So close to that intersection, we're going to have people turning left and right on the, on the, oh, thank you.
Okay, yeah, call five more names.
So following, we have, I think, is it Lars Rutendal? Gary Rutendal? Look, okay. Dr. Thomas Colhan? Anna Lee? I don't have the name, I have email addresses. I can't hear you.
Michaela McMahon.
Michaela McMahon, thank you. I see the name underneath. Kendall Jackson? Richard Somerville? And Julia, is it Bertunek? All right. I believe you must be Ms. Dina?
Dina.
Dina, okay, go ahead.
I do have one picture.
Go ahead.
My name is Dina Marisi. I live at 22729 Neff Court. I have been sworn in. Will the picture be relevant at the end? I'm going to go way far off of where everybody's gone, so please just be patient, and it'll all come together at the end. Traditional models used to study road choices and routes assume that people are well-informed and have all the information needed to make decisions about the routes that they choose. The results have been challenged for the ability to capture realistic results due to insights from the field of psychology. Human choice behavior has been shown to reduce imperfect systems. Studies show that human perception, even if not accurate, has a huge impact on the decisions that we make. Valid studies performed within the last one to six years utilize GPS navigation systems to assist in capturing realistic data. Essentially, the end data shows that people prefer to drive where they are most comfortable, in other words, based on personal perception. A study in 2017 showed that general decisions that rely on personal perception can be influenced by the physical resistance encountered to make those, to get to the end result, and that people more often choose the path of least resistance. So why does any of this matter in this case? We can put this all together, and we can conclude that because of personal perception is involved when we drive, we cannot possibly accurately predict where people are going to drive, on what road they're going to choose to drive, because it involves personal perception, personal choice. So we can study it in retrospect, which is what the planners have done, and we can predict what we think people are going to do when they drive, but we cannot really accurately show where people are going to drive. So they've done studies, the planners of this development, on what they think people are going to drive when they put an exit here or an exit there, but they don't know where they're going to go. The studies that they've relied on, they have not taken into account the developments that have already been approved further on up Parkway Boulevard. That traffic has not been included. So the new proposed turn lanes, they're great, but they don't mitigate the fact that the whole Hale Road has been determined to be suboptimal. Exiting on the Collier doesn't mean that people are going to stay on there. I personally get the heck off Collier as quick as I can. And this picture, I purposely drove this way on Sunday, you can see the time, at 1:30 in the afternoon. This is Collier and 54. I'm in the right lane, that's the turn lane. You can see how far backed up this is on a Sunday afternoon. I moved into Sable Ridge in 2017. I used to drive on Collier. Get out, turn right, that's the way I went. I now drive Hale Road as my preferred preference because it is the path of least resistance for me. I get out of my subdivision, which is in Sable Ridge, I turn left on Collier, and I go right down Hale Road. I drive the speed limit, but that's my perceived preferred route because Collier is crazy to drive on. Thank you for your time.
Is that our last sheet?
Oh, no.
Hello. Thomas Colhan, 4202 East Fowler Avenue. I have been sworn in. Good afternoon. I'm a National Geographic Explorer and Professor at USF Tampa. I have a master's in urban planning from UCLA and honors BA from Harvard, and I request, oh, a PhD, sorry, I have a PhD and a master's. Shouldn't forget that.
Don't forget that.
And I request that you recommend denial of this application. I've just returned from presenting world-class development bright spots at the International Urban Health Institute Conference in Spain, where the mayor and planner stated strongly that we have a clear choice. Either we build healthier and more sustainable and safe and resilient communities, or we build more hospitals and jails. This proposal is neither healthy nor safe for Pasco residents nor sustainable. At the Rosebud Eco Science Center, a jewel for Pasco County, on a weekly basis for six years, I've conducted landscape research, habitat restoration, and wildlife surveys, work on invasive species removal and repatriation of Florida native wildlife. And spending time at the Rosebud School, I can tell you that the public, our students, our many participating groups and organizations, and our international visitors rely on the existing zoning and rural character of this neighboring property. The practitioners for this unsustainable development plan insist that this region in Pasco is a donut hole that must be filled with dense housing. They told me to prevent sprawl elsewhere. We, the people, see the area as a vital oasis, part of the national lily pad network of resiliency hubs, a sanctuary, a last refuge for wildlife, a green space for families and animals and plants to coexist and improve the quality of life in our region. Now Comprehensive Plan Objective 1.4, the Future Land Use Element, states development should, quote, "ensure the long-term sustainability and viability of residential neighborhoods by regulating future development to create compatibility with surrounding land uses," end quote. Today's application is incompatible and conflicts with the country's, the county's MPUD, which is, quote, "to encourage innovations in residential and non-residential development," and, quote, "provide options and incentives designed to protect the rural character of the county," end quote. Here, the proposal is a swath of densely built 40- and 50-foot lot homes, less than half the width required in current zoning, covering roughly double the land the current zoning allows. Now, I've worked on innovative urban design projects that meet the Living Building Challenge 4.0, and this proposal doesn't. On the world stage, we know that we can be far more innovative than this embarrassingly outdated proposal. Pasco County's Policer for Future Land Use 1.2.2.3 actually encourages the establishment of incentives for developments that incorporate green building principles into project design and implementation. And as of yet, our conversation with KB Holmes on green building techniques have left us empty-handed, and they've told us they don't want or need to talk to the community any further. KB Holmes claims that they're entitled to the full density, and as we heard from our lawyer, Jane, that's just not true. Considering the environmental benefits features of the land and potential for flooding, runoff from toxins and lawns and cars, the density KB Holmes is striving for cannot be achieved without harming its present surrounding use. Now, please don't understand, we want this area to grow, but we want it to grow in the right way, in a healthy way, to Pasco County's strict standards, and we want it to grow like Babcock Ranch, that show that Pasco's ahead of the game when it comes to safety and resiliency. So you've got a great reputation for innovations, please deny this unimaginative proposal today and demand that out-of-town developers meet the county's strict and innovative standards. Thank you very much.
I'd like to submit my speech into evidence, as I have an appendix with references I would like to hand you guys.
On favor? Aye.
We're killing lots of trees today for an environmentally conscious group.
Yes, we are.
I know we don't use paper, but it's the easiest to give to you.
I have some of the same photos in here for many people.
I'm Michaela McMahon. I live on 15109 Bughorn Court, and I have been sworn in. I'm a master's student at USF in the College of Public Health, as well as a volunteer at Rosebud. We are here today to discuss the proposed rezoning of property at the corner of Hale and Collier. I'm not opposed to development, but I am opposed to unsustainable development in areas that lack proper public health oversight and the promotion of healthy built environments, such as improper transportation infrastructure via walking and biking for pedestrians, notably school-age residents, and access to local jobs. These factors, as with many others not mentioned, have a profound impact on the quality of life of Pasco residents. To echo the Supreme Court decision granting zoning constitutional legitimacy, zoning is designed to promote the health and safety of the community. To start, the built environment plays a key role in pedestrian safety. However, according to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, Florida consistently ranks among the worst in pedestrian safety. Incontiguous sidewalks, which is what is being proposed for Hale, contributes to such poor ratings. Urban design of the built environment takes many factors into consideration, such as transportation and safety, and should accommodate to the diverse needs of its residents. Consequently, with Hale Road being characterized as a substandard road, failing to meet standards set by the Pasco County Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan, it falls short of successful urban design, admitting the needs of residents, especially school-age residents. The addition of this development will only exacerbate the existing pedestrian safety issues that are attributed to Hale's substandard conditions, such as kids waiting in dishes, ditches for their school bus, or walking or biking on the road due to there being no sidewalks available. Studies show that a pedestrian crash along a roadway is 1.67 times higher when there is no sidewalks as opposed to when there is one. This development will only increase the inequity school-age residents already face. Secondly, access to local jobs positively affects the health of residents and of the local economy that's thus contributing to a healthy built environment. However, findings from a strategic analysis done by the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council found that Pasco County has the longest commute in the Tampa Bay area of 32 minutes. Pasco County has the lowest jobs-to-employed-resident ratio balance in the Tampa Bay area, with 70% of employed residents working outside the county. These statistics pose serious public health repercussions, such as decreasing local air quality and decreasing overall traffic safety for residents commuting long hours in an automobile and for pedestrians. To offset these issues, David Engel, the Economic Growth Director of Pasco County, iterated, and, quote, "we need 150,000 jobs to meet a one-to-one ratio, dot, 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 that is a substantial amount of jobs and well over our pipeline," end quote, in his presentation of the strategic analysis. Overall, a shift in focus from needing more housing to needing more local jobs is pertinent. In conclusion, I ask that the rezoning of property does not receive approval, and that a focus on increasing healthy built environments through mitigation of transportation infrastructure and increasing access to local jobs takes precedence. Thank you.
Richard Somerville, 16205 Larson Lane. I have been sworn, Hudson. In 2014, Naomi Klein's book, This Changes Everything: Capitalism Versus the Climate, was published. In Chapter 5, she describes what some political scientists call extractivism. She defines extractivism as, quote, "a nonreciprocal dominance-based relationship with the earth, one purely of taking. It is the opposite of stewardship, which involves taking, but also taking care that regeneration and future life continue," unquote. At first, I thought of extractivism as only removing resources from inside the earth, as she described, but then I realized that extractivism can also describe what is happening in many places here in Pasco County. That is, the extraction from existence, more or less permanently, of vast swaths of forest or agricultural land with little concern for the life that is being destroyed. A case in point is the Hale-Collier proposal. One troubling aspect of this proposal is the number of constructed ponds around existing wetlands south of Hale Road. These constructed ponds are shown to encroach on the 25-foot wetland buffer in some cases. Building a pond next to wetlands will tend to de-water the wetlands during dry periods. This will probably stress and kill some of the wetland plants and make the wetlands dysfunctional. Constructed ponds will probably not serve as a replacement for the wetlands, thus there will be a net loss of wetland function from this project. The other troubling aspect is 10-foot between houses. I think that, I don't know if that's changed yet, changed from the Planning Commission meeting. Wouldn't it be better to save this 10-foot by building townhouses, which are houses sharing walls? Another possibility is building condos. These alternatives would allow the same number of dwelling units in the smaller area, thus allowing some land to remain natural. This would allow the wetland buffers to be enlarged and remain intact. Would a common wall with your neighbor save in energy costs? I've visited several websites, and it seems in most circumstances, townhouses use less energy than detached houses, thus helping with climate change. I have a closing quote, quote, "There will be no end to the troubles, to the troubles of states or of humanity itself till philosophers become kings in this world, or till those we now call kings and rulers really and truly become philosophers." The political power and philosophy thus come into the same hands. Plato. Please deny the zoning changes. Please get advice from philosophers.
Thank you. Okay, can you call four more people if we have them?
Sure. Kendall Jackson was missed. I'm assuming this might be Julia, oh, Kendall. Okay, thank you. Julia Bertunek?
Yes, I've been sworn.
Hold on just a second, let me get some more. Daniel, is it Carowen? Caraway? Caro? I don't know. Thank you. The signature gets smaller. Sunny Bishop? Nelson Herbert? Christina LaRoca? You may proceed.
Yeah, I have been sworn. My name is Julia Bartunek, 2645 Meadowood Drive, Newport Ritchie, 34655, and I'm also requesting to submit for public record of requesting to submit for public a record of this meeting, a previous speaker’s documents that did not get to—
Motion to receive the file.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. This is to urge you to vote no on Item P92, whereas Goal 7 of the Natural Resource Conservation and Management Element of the County Comprehensive Plan provides that the county will be a leader in environmentally sustainable government operations, a proponent of smart and sustainable growth management practices, and will have a strong economy supported by sound environmental principles, programs, and practices. The Sierra Club of Pasco County Conservation Committee urges this committee, Commission, to vote no. The development would have a significant adverse impact on the area, natural ecology, and quality of life. Sierra Club’s opposition is united with concerns of many residents, both within the area and outside of it. Additionally, it’s reflective of concerns for the voiceless animals and wildlife living in and near the planned development. The development will destroy a healthy ecosystem, kill and coils to die countless native plants and animals, including wild turkeys, gopher tortoises, whose burrows provide habitat to 360 species—sandal cranes, opossums, owls, hawks, and other threatened and endangered species, whereas Objective 3.3 of the County Strategic Plan calls for protecting and improving the quality of our water, air, and other natural resources. Other negative impacts are worthy of note, and they are not congruent with the County’s Strategic Plan as follows. These include impacts on water quality and the Cypress Creek well field, impacts on other lakes in the area, impacts on well water, impacts on drainage, impacts on quality of life, whereas the county is developing a Sustainability and Resiliency Action Plan to promote organizational and community-based sustainability and resiliency activities and programming in alignment with the County’s Strategic Plan structure and operations and services. Ecologically sound practices, like those that exist at the wonderful Rosebud Continuum Educational Center, are to be treasured. This unique center is next to a pristine lake that hopefully will be preserved from surrounding developments. Rosebud Continuum Center helps disabled and intellectually challenged children and adults, along with both public and private schools, to include USF’s Pedale College of Sustainability students, who learn about and study sustainability practices, healthy ecosystems, and biomes. Again, the Sierra Club Pasco Conservation Committee is strongly opposed to Item P92 and urges you to vote your community’s conscience on this item. Vote no. This proposed development is not just not in the right place at the right time, it is in the wrong place for all time.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Yes.
May I please have this submitted record?
Oh, we did already.
No, she submitted somewhere else.
Oh, she submitted something else earlier. Motion to receive the file.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Hello. I’m going to read. I’m a field scientist, so public speaking is not my thing.
We need your name and address, and if you’ve been sworn.
My name is Kendall Jackson. I’ve been sworn in. I live at 4847 Canterbury Drive, a few hundred feet from the intersection of Hale and Collier. Just the name of a line. No affiliation, unfortunately. I’m a registered—
Sir, I’m sorry, could you speak into the mic closer? Thank you.
I’m a registered professional archaeologist. I work for—which means I have a masters in archaeology and have conducted different types of archaeological work. I work at USF and also for a number of regional cultural resources consulting firms. I’m also a lifelong resident of Land O’ Lakes, the community encompassing the Hale-Collier Project area. As a scientist, a cultural resources professional, and a community member, I’m obligated to speak and act in opposition to the proposed rezoning. As you are aware, Chapter 800 of the Pasco LDC, as well as Chapter 267 of the Florida statutes, require that the county dutifully consider and work to prevent or mitigate impacts to the archaeological, historical, and cultural resources by any MPUD activities. Because Pasco has no Cultural Resources Office, the heritage of our county is too often written off and destroyed after being given short shrift by profit-driven consultants. I can speak to that firsthand. As has been found by several compliance archaeologists working in the area, this project area exhibits a high probability for ancient and historic indigenous settlements and cemeteries. Indeed, recorded and unrecorded native sites have been found along the perimeter of the project area during previous work. Native American cemeteries are particularly likely along the margins of the Lake Cypress wetlands, which are destined, as was just said, for stormwater pond dredging. The project area is located a short distance south of the late 19th to early 20th century mill town of Aaron, which was run by upwards of 1,000 black forestry workers, many of whom established homesteads south of the mill works in the direction of the project area. Late 19th century patents show homesteaders on the project area who typically developed family cemeteries that infamously evade hasty and poorly designed archaeological surveys, which have become all too common. State survey guidelines deferred to by the LDC require testing at 20-meter intervals throughout high-probability areas, as well as a dutiful search for ancient and historic cemeteries. An adequate survey must also identify and consider the significance of historical roadways, such as Hale Road, as well as rural historic landscapes, such as the corridor of ag residential parcels along Hale Road. Can this board certify that it has dutifully considered potential impacts to the cultural heritage of our county? Where is the survey? Was it adequate? What is the plan for detecting and dealing with ancient and historical cemeteries? Local histories indicate that at least two small historic-period cemeteries are likely on the property. The disturbance of unmarked cemeteries by any MPUD activity will constitute a felony under Chapter 872 of the Florida statutes. KB Homes and their consultants should consider themselves dutifully notified. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And my email’s there. I can be reached there if you have questions.
Thank you.
If you don’t mind, sir—not you, the next—we’re going to call up the gentleman with the cane, so he doesn’t have to keep standing.
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Oh, you’re welcome.
I really need the exercise.
Thank you for your patience, everybody. This is a tough subject. You know, driving is so easy. So easy.
We’re going to need your name and your address.
Nelson Herbert, 23614, Shining Star Drive, Land O’ Lakes. I’ve been sworn in several places. And we are taxpayers and voters, that’s kind of important, too. At any rate, driving is so easy nowadays, but I’m perplexed as to how much academics we have to draw upon. Such a vast amount of PowerPoints and in-depth experience, and I turn off a Collier onto Hale Road, and the first thing I see is a 30 mile an hour speed limit, and right behind that is a five mile an hour curve sign. Let’s get to the bottom line here. We lost 50,000 teenagers in 10 years, and you folks want to train your kids? Call me, please, my number’s on here. I can help you. I spent almost 20 years teaching the DuPont Corporation and various corporations from Quebec to San Diego in their cars, marketing, tech, and service reps. These were experienced drivers. At that point, the Fortune 500 companies have big labels, Risk Corporation, Risk Mitigation, reducing the corporate collision rate, and here we are trying to get things straightened out for the safety of our community. We saw 50% reduction in the corporate collision rate. They needed it. They knew where to put their money. So, I have a background, spent several years, 12 years locally here with Continental Can Company, as a safety chairman there for the steelworkers union, 900 workers, 38 forklifts, safety section leader in the North Hillsborough Volunteer Fire Department. Our biggest territory was USF. We were busy day and night, 24/7. Safety officer in the 11th and 13th Special Forces Group, locally, jumping in around here, locally, we’d run down and jump in the Panama Canal Zone at nighttime, loaded for bear. Much safer than driving down my street in front of my house. I dare anyone who has an extra evening, if your insurance is paid up, to drive down my street at night and try to keep your car centered. The lines are not—are missing, there’s no yellow line. To be frank with you, when cars are coming at me with their glare, headlight glare, I’m happy to see the reflectors on the mailboxes. I’m talking about the bottom line here tonight, bottom line. And it gets worse. You saw that picture up there with that car with that bicyclist right near? Had a son on Livingston Road like that, he was 16. He was hit by a drunken driver, thrown 170 feet down the road. This is the bottom line. If you have kids with bicycles, chain them up.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, you want a couple more names?
I have some pictures here.
Motion to receive the file.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
All right, I’m going to call a couple more names. Russell Wattras. Sunny Bishop. Christina LaRoca. Jenny—Is it Flat?
Permission to add a list.
He’s trying to res—he’s trying to file something.
I’ll take a motion.
Motion to receive the file.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
It’s like 20 trees today.
My name is Daniel Carrer, reside at 4829 Everhard Drive, directly adjacent to the subject property on the south perimeter. I’ve also provided a signed opposition by five other homeowners on that same street that directly are adjacent. I have been sworn. Where are the signs? Where are the for-sale signs that have been on the subject property for many, many months? Perhaps the question in planning—the planning meeting about the retail and commercial aspirations at corner lot at Hale and Collier caused a stir. The zoning and planning request before you is for approximately 46.1 acres. I’ve read, provided for you, and put in the record literature about this property, quote, “prime 10-acre corner commercial rezoned land, another titled 10-acre retail 38-acre residential development land, and 47.6 acres commercial.” So what’s correct? This clearly shows the actual market of this property and the intended use is something far different with this plan and the zoning change request before you depicts. This corner lot, depending on what’s true, accounts for between 2% and 25% of the entire parcel they’re proposing on developing. It’ll likely impact or even prevent the new entrance off Collier and the retention pine relocation. In planning, KB Homes’ John, I believe, specifically asked about this corner parcel and stated under oath he did not know. Does anyone actually believe you have no idea the actual plan for that corner lot holdout, when it would have such a profound impact on your overall multimillion-dollar project? Of course they know. They don’t want anybody in this room to know, or adversely impact it, no. As KB Homes is planning on pushing the zoning change and dumping the property on another developer like they—I stated that it was done in another—I believe it could have been a different county, but nonetheless. KB Homes has made repeated misleading statements about the ratio of the adjacent budding homes on Sable Ridge, stating a difference of only three, when in fact it was over four times that. KB Homes has also made repeating and misleading statements about the homes per acre density by including unbuildable water and sensitive land acreage. If you exclude that, the ratio is not 2.4, it’s closer to 3.2 homes per acre. If the commercial and retail desired corner lots excluded, the ratio of high-density homes jumps to 4.5 homes per acre, on some with apparently 85% building coverage per lot. This is absolutely unacceptable. I’ve previously presented and included in my correspondence a graphical representation overlay, so you can actually see the gross impact of the high-density subdivision on that limited parcel to the adjacent properties. In fairness, there has been some changes made to this, but 50-foot wide lots doesn’t change the ratio that much. This directly violates one of the paramount requirements of the MPUD, the compatibility of use, quote, “shall be planned as be compatible with neighboring areas.” In addition to LDC 402, 1E, 12, and 5, the Post Planning Commission PDD analysis that was made, that I recently looked at, is absolutely laughable, with loose references, few sites, and having a dismissive tone of your own expert appointees in planning and the citizens’ concerns that were substantiated in that meeting and subsequent denial. No buffer will create harmony or compatibility with adjacent properties with such disparaging lot sizes, 40- and 50-foot wide lots, home sizes some two-story with 10-foot rear setbacks, destroying privacy adjacent property values and exacerbating home and lot and roadway flooding concerns. KB Homes and the Realtors think they’ve got the vote in the bag, expecting it’ll sail right through. It’s time to prove that, again, you have the best interest of the county and its citizens in mind, time to further reinforce and make even more clear the subject matter experts that you have in the planning board and their recommendation, which should have been a unanimous no. It’s the wrong plan, wrong place, wrong conditions, too many questions, inconsistencies, misrepresentations, and misleading statements have occurred. This request to approve the planning and zoning change must absolutely be denied. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Okay, why don’t we have a line? I don’t know.
You’re not in line, you cannot speak.
Sunny Bishop, Christina LaRoca, Jenny Flart. I’m sorry, I missed one. Russell Wattras.
I’m Russell Wattras, 5218 Eagle Island Drive, I’ve been sworn in.
Okay, one second. Where are those—if you’re not in line, we’ll go on to someone else.
He’s eight feet. Consider those not there.
No, he can’t. He’s excused. He’s next. He’s next.
So I have Sunny Bishop, Christina LaRoca, Jenny Flart—
Where’s Jenny?
Oh, Jerry.
Oh, Jerry. Oh, sorry. Where’s Jerry?
Jerry Flood.
Jerry Flood.
Jerry Flat.
Where’s Jerry Flat?
The man talking, who knows his name.
Okay, he can get up real quick.
Sorry.
We’re just trying to move this along quicker, that’s why we were hoping that we’d have a line here, because it’s a long day, and—
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Wattras.
Are we ready? This—I am Russell Wattras, 5218 Eagle Island Drive, and I’ve been sworn in. You’ve seen this, okay? That’s the school bus. This is the one that was explained earlier. It’s on Hale Road, and having a school bus cross the road and a garbage truck across the road is not a good thing, and Hale Road is not a safe road. I’ve driven Hale Road now for 28 years, back and forth to work, and if you’re looking for an expert on the traffic situation on Hale Road, I’m it, okay? I’ve seen it change from a peaceful country road to something that’s really unsafe, a hazard. In fact, this past Sunday afternoon, I was passed on Hale Road by two cars that were racing. I believe they were young people, and I estimate they were going about 60 miles an hour when they passed me on the straightaway between Alpine and the Rosebud Curve there. Fortunately, no one was coming around the curve at the time, or they would have been ahead on collision. That was just one instance. A school bus—school bus traffic is very heavy on Hale, and it isn’t unusual to see three school buses lined up, one behind the other, coming down Hale Road, okay? About two weeks ago, we nearly had a school bus collision when a bus was making a left-hand turn off of Hale onto Collier Parkway, and a line of cars was making a left-hand turn off of Collier going north onto Hale Road. Fortunately, the brakes on the cars were very good, and there was no collision, but there was a lot of horn blowing and people in the cars shouting, which saved the school bus. Putting in nearly 109 more houses on that corner isn’t going to improve the safety one little bit. In fact, that’s a very congested intersection two days, two times a week. I think the approval of this development will set a precedent for cramming houses on 40-foot lots without proper infrastructure. Approval would also set the precedent for four other properties on Hale Road, which will probably be before you soon. They are going to be requesting approval. If you grant these rights to KB Homes to build this subdivision, how are you going to— you gonna deny these other four people, their, these landowners, their rights? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've called Sunny Bishop a couple of times, is...
No, she's...
Oh, okay. Thank you.
She's asleep.
That's okay.
Uh, uh, uh.
I didn't wanna skip you.
Excuse me if I ramble, I'm not too good at public speaking, but I'd like to, uh, my wife, Mary Ann, and myself have lived on this property for, I don't know, thirty years.
Start with your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn in.
My name is Sunny Bishop. I live at twenty-two eight four three Hale Road, directly across from this property that we're talking about, and they also have a track on the south side. And, uh...
And have you been sworn in? Thank you.
Okay. It's getting a little late for me. My concern, and it should be for a lot of people, is not only the traffic, but there used to be kids, my grandkids or some of them, used to ride their bike on that road. There's no way they could have ride their bike on that road today. So I'm concerned also about the flooding. Luckily, we're on the high end of it, but I don't know what happens south of us. And I, if they have the problem, you take away the natural drainage of forty-six acres, you're really gonna compound the problem. But my main concern is the traffic. I just worry about the, the kids that come to our place, as we have a kind of a haven for kids, and, uh, with our Rosebud Continuum, and I, it's just the wrong project, like they said, the wrong time, and it's, too many people in a congested area, too many cars, and I'm not against development. I used to be in development, so I'm not against that. I, I think every development should fit into its surrounding area and complement it, and not, this would bring it, just a, a bad situation to an already worsening situation. And that's about all I had to say, is I'm concerned more about the, the drainage that that natural will take away, the development of it on a high density situation, which is all pavements and rooftops, it's, doesn't make much sense. I don't know what their, what their plans are, I haven't seen their plans of how they're gonna get rid of the water. And, uh, that's the only problems I have at, the traffic, so I think my wife will let me sit down, and I'll go back and sit down.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm on charge.
Thank you. Mr. Flatt?
Yes.
Jerry Flatt.
Jerry Flatt.
Sorry about that.
Don't feel bad, I, I can't read my own writing sometimes. So my name is Jerry Flatt, and I live at fifty-six forty-three White Ibis Lane, Land of Lakes. I have been a resident of Pasco County for forty-two years. I moved my business here from Hillsborough County. I have been sworn, I'm sorry. I moved my business here from Hillsborough County, uh, years ago, matter of fact, about two thousand and one, since have established another business, two businesses here in Pasco County. I love Pasco County, I've enjoyed living here. I got away from Hillsborough County because of the mess with traffic and all the, the non-controlled growth that was being done there. And I felt like Pasco was a place that I could locate, not just my business, but live and not have the same issue that I had in Hillsborough County. I purchased fourteen acres on Hale Road from Ms. Franzell. She was the original owner, owned it in nineteen forty-six with her husband. Her granddaughter is the one that's doing the, the, the deal with KB Homes to sell the property. I tried to buy it all from her, even the portion that they're gonna develop, but she had had some bad dealings with some real estate people, so, and she was old school, and she didn't, she didn't wanna do that, that deal. So anyway, I bought that property because it is in a rural area. I went to the county and talked to them about projections for anything that was gonna be done to that road, because I was looking for the quietness and, and the open space. They assured me, the people that I spoke to in the zoning department, that there were no funds available, nor were there any plans in the future for the widening or doing anything with Hale Road. They referred to it as being substandard, they referred to it as being inadequate, and so that suited me just fine, because I was looking, looking for the peacefulness of it. Now, we find that there's another project that is going in, and I have grave concerns, as you've heard from all the people that have spoken, about the safety and other issues regarding that. If this is approved, the real estate agent will make their commission. The lady that owns it now, the granddaughter of Ms. Franzell, will get a lot of money, and she'll build a house somewhere else. KB Homes will build those houses, finish out that project, and they'll be going on to something else. The county, yes, would get taxes based on the number of houses put in there, but I, I request that you think about all these people that are here, that live in that neighborhood, and that have expressed their concerns, and that you not accept this project to go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Christina LaRoca? Is she gone? Thank you. Elizabeth Matthews? Margarita Hardy? Peyton Hoey? Okay.
Keep going.
Uh-huh. I'm, I'm pronouncing this one in my head. Ali Abdel Quater? Quater?
Alldel Katter.
Katter, almost. All right. Go ahead and proceed.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Matthews. I live at two one eight zero eight Hale Road, Land of Lakes, and I have been sworn in. My currently, my children currently and have previously attended Land of Lakes High School, Pineview Middle School, and Pineview Elementary, so I'd like to address the student to teacher ratios that'll be impacted by the proposed plan as it stands now pursuant to Florida statute one zero zero three point zero three, section one, subsections A through C, the class size maximums. In grades pre-K through third, the class size maximum ratios are eighteen to one. Pineview Elementary School is currently at fourteen to one. Grades four through eight, maximum is twenty-two to one. Pineview Middle School is currently at seventeen to one. The closest, dangerously close, is the ninth to twelfth grade level, which is a maximum of twenty-five to one. Land of Lakes High School is at twenty-two to one, which is higher than the Florida State level of sixteen to one. The nearest high school to Land of Lakes High School is Sunlake, which is approximately three miles away. They're also at a twenty-two to one ratio, so where will these children go when you're looking at homes of three to four bedrooms apiece?
You go ahead and proceed. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marguerite Harvey. I live at two three three four seven Sierra Road, and I have been sworn in. I've been a resident of Land of Lakes since nineteen sixty-six. My family moved here from Hillsborough County when I was in first grade. I graduated from Land of Lakes High School, was one of the first graduates, graduating classes there. I married my high school sweetheart. We've been married almost forty-three years. We've raised six children in Land of Lakes, and we have thirteen grandchildren, seven of which live in Land of Lakes. Four of those access Hale Road. The Bishop's and I share four of my grandchildren, and they live approximately a mile from that property. They ride bikes, or they have ridden bikes and have walked to Collier and Hale Road. It's becoming increasingly and increasingly more dangerous, as you've heard, so I will not belabor that point. So what I will say is, I drive my granddaughter and a cousin home, because they are in that now requirement where they have to have their own transportation from school, they go to Pineview Middle School. I'm fortunate to do that, many kids are not, and when I'm driving my cousin's daughter, Callie, home, who lives at Branch Ranch, we see children riding bikes with big, heavy backpacks, wobbling, driving on the side of the road. And one time, there was a young man with a backpack, paddling down the road, and he could hear the line of buses coming behind him, and he got nervous, and next thing you know, he's sliding down into one of those deep ditches, if you've seen the pictures, you saw that. And it was quite alarming to see, because I thought that we were gonna witness the first accident and, or death of a child on that road. I know that's not your doing, but you need this information. So I strongly suggest that you disapprove what KB Homes is suggesting, like many of my other friends on the Coalition. One of the things that I did wanna mention is, this gentleman here mentioned some of the deceitfulness, um, reporting that he felt was deceitful from KB Homes from the last, um, planning commission meeting. They didn't know what the ten acres was, this, that, and the other. They've changed things and, and whatnot. And that seems to be a general theme with KB Homes. There's been a couple of class action suits filed against them in the state of Florida. The Attorney General in two thousand and eighteen, there's a seventy, seventy-seven million dollar lawsuit against KB Homes to pay out to people who have been misrepresented by KB Homes and have had shoddy homes built by KB Homes, and I just would like you to take that into consideration when you're making this decision. That's not the kind of neighbor that we want. They're not a good neighbor. They're rated one point five on the Better Business Bureau, and I just hope that you listen to the community. Thank you.
Okay, um, if there, so we have two more speakers left. If there's anyone else who wants to speak that is, didn't sign up, this is your opportunity to get in line. If you are not in line, then we're gonna close public comment.
Hello, my name is Peyton Hoey. I live at fifty-two thirty-four Tennis Court Circle. I was sworn in, and I'm a member of the Tampa Tenants Union and a graduate student at the Patel College of Global Sustainability. I am here that you make, I am here to ask that you make the right decision to protect the ecosystems and wildlife that this county prides itself in, and to stand with the interests of the people of Pasco over frankly profit hungry developers. It's clear that we are in a housing crisis. Florida continues to lead the nation in percentage of rent hikes yearly, but the answer is not to just build more congested homes. The creation of these cookie cutter, high-volume homes failed to solve the housing crisis and come with a larger cost, irreparable damage to our wildlife and natural systems. After conducting weeks of hurricane relief efforts in Northport and Fort Myers with other grassroots activists and myself, one thing is glaringly clear. Developing in vulnerable wetlands destroys the natural barriers that we have to protect our homes, schools, local businesses, and livelihoods from natural disasters. Pasco County is no different, with flooding already a main issue for residents after your average rainy day. I've seen firsthand the devastation that these climate disasters have had on communities, and the impacts of inland flooding, flooding and storm surge, left with nowhere to go, because those natural barriers have been continuously exploited with only profit in mind. Families left displaced without homes, walls filled with mold and decay, properties unrecognizable and widespread despair are the results of just a few feet of flooding. As the climate crisis intensifies, it is only a matter of time before we are directly hit by a hurricane as well. I know everyone in this room fears that. As county commissioners, your job entails preparing for these events and mitigating the damage. Why not stop it before it starts? As you've heard from the students, faculty, and of PCGS and the passionate residents of Pasco County here today, Rosebud Continuum is a sanctuary that borders this property. It serves as a sustainable educational and community building tool that I have had the pleasure to be a part of, and yet is, it is under attack. A world where this property is rezoned is a world where places like Rosebud face great danger. Flooding, runoff, and increased traffic will continue to destroy existing properties and the wildlife that surrounds them. And for what? To maximize the profits of KB Homes at the expense of the environment and the people of Pasco? I want you to take a look at the room today. Look at the amount of green shirts in the crowd that showed up despite the distance and it being in the middle of the workday. I'll let you in on a little secret. No one on our side is being paid. The people of Pasco County, who you have been elected to represent, are speaking today, but will you listen to them? Will you side with the residents, the wildlife of Pasco County, and your constituents and vote no on this rezoning, or will you stand in the way of democracy to protect out-of-state developers and their corporate interests? Thank you.
Hello. I've been sworn in. I live at fifty-two thirty-four Tennis Court Circle. My name is Ali Abdel Katter. I'm also a member of the Tampa Tenants Union. Am I good to start here? Yes?
Have you been sworn in?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I just saw that the time hadn't started, but more extra time for me. So, first off, I just wanna, you know, thank all the people in this room who came out here today. It's really amazing to see so many members of the community make time out of their day and sacrifice time out of their day to come here, and it proves just how important this zoning decision is to them and what an impact it would have on the community, you know? Seeing members of the community and leaders of the community out here, it, it's very inspiring. And, you know, the call is for this area to not be developed in a way that isn't sustainable. And in my honest opinion, I don't think KB Homes is interested in sustainable development in this area. If they were, they wouldn't be trying to change the zoning like this. And it's understandable why, why you would wanna develop this county, right? I mean, there is an incentive for you to do it, there's an incentive for you to grow this county, but not like this, not in a way that would, you know, threaten the wetlands of this county and really jeopardize the gem that you have here with Rosebud Continuum Center right next door. I really think you should consider, instead of zoning this property in a way that would make it very congested and sort of ruin and exploit the wetlands that exist currently there, work with Rosebud, work with trying to get, you know, a grant from the state, from the federal government for sustainable development, and to show off what this county can really do, to show off what we can do to preserve our wetlands while developing, you know, in a way that is sustainable. So, one of the reasons that this came to me is, I was speaking with someone just outside here, you know, local employee here in Pasco County in Dade City, and they were telling me how, they had just come back to Dade City, you know, they were born here, and they came back to live here after eleven years, and they were just shocked at the amount of, you know, areas that are now subdevelopments that used to be just swamp, right? And we have to understand and we have to recognize the effect this is gonna have on our future generations if we don't take a good, hard look at what we're doing here and really grapple with the realities of the climate crisis. And again, I'm not saying all the burden should be on this county to, to shoulder that, but I think this county really has an opportunity to lead the way in, in terms of showing off what sustainable growth can really look like and really shifting towards that. And I, to that end, I really urge you not to rezon this property, not to, you know, bow down to these out-of-state developers who do not have the best interests of this county in mind. The only thing they have in their interest is their profit, their bottom line. Meanwhile, the community has come out here, and they've made themselves very clear, and I hope you stand on the side of the people. Thank you very much.
Okay. And the gentleman in the green shirt will be our last speaker.
My name is Mary McKnight, three six two and zero, Saint Joe Road, and I have been sworn. In an effort not to be redundant, I keep scratching my speech, and so it's, it's a big mess, so it may not be very coherent. But there are a lot of things to consider with this project. Flooding, sustainability, wetland protection, forty-foot lot compatibility, and safety. I wanna talk about the issue of safety, because I think this project should be rejected or at least deferred until the entire length of Hale Road is brought up to county road standards. In the Pasco County Engineering Services Design Division report of two thousand and four, it calls Hale Road "an extremely narrow roadway with substandard geometric curvature without shoulders or adequate drainage, all of which is compounded with the existing school bu- bus traffic." And that was eighteen years ago, and you've heard all the people talking tonight, and they have confirmed, I don't think there's... any doubt about the status of Hale Road as a substandard road. So, with all you have to consider tonight, the Land Development Code lists a couple of factors for you to consider when evaluating an input, and maybe these will help you decide. One of them is whether the proposed change will create or excessively increase traffic congestion or otherwise affect traffic safety. And the other is whether the proposed change will adversely affect living conditions in the immediate and surrounding neighborhoods. And I think any number of additional auto trips would do both of those. For the sake of safety alone, I do think this project should be shelved until Hale Road is brought up to county standards. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, two more speakers. And then we have one person online. I think we used to have two, but I think we lost one.
Good afternoon.
Oh, no, they're bad.
One was in person, and the other one didn't log in.
I'm Nathan Lefada. I live at 22843 Hale Road, and I have sworn in. Section 402.1E of the Land Development Code lists a number of factors to consider when evaluating the NPUD application. Two applicable rules here. What, quote, "Whether the proposed change will create or excessively increase traffic congestion or otherwise affect traffic safety," quote, and whether, quote, "Whether the proposed change will adversely affect living conditions in the immediate surrounding neighborhoods," this project runs afoul of both criteria. The developer's second traffic study acknowledges that the project will add more than 1,000 trips per day and concedes that if this project is approved, Hale Road will operate at level of Service D. How is the National Academy of Science Highway Capacity Manual describes LOSD passing capacity approaches zero, quote, "Motorists are delayed platoons for nearly 8% of their travel time." Quote, "Turning vehicles and roadside distinctions cause major shock waves in the traffic stream, and the driver experiences reduced physical and psychological comfort levels." And that is on a road that meets minimum standards, which Hale Road doesn't. Hale Road is a substandard road. For the most of the stretch of Collier to 41, the lanes are narrower than required by the 901.4 of the LDC. In addition, large stretches of Hale Road have drainage ditches, power holes, or large trees and bushes where the shoulders are supposed to be. So if there's an oncoming car in your lane, there's nowhere to go and get out of the way. And if there's an accident, there's no place to pull off, and then traffic is heavy. Emergency vehicles can't get through quickly. And I've worked down the road, and the man passed away because an ambulance couldn't get there on time. And that's just down on Collier, actually. So a substandard road is going to be very congested. Traffic delays are going to be the norm. Drivers are going to become aggravated upset, and the road won't be able to handle accidents. Such conditions clearly will adversely affect living conditions in the immediately surrounding the neighborhoods. The people who have to use Hale Road and Collier every day will be subject to unjustified and undeserved stresses as well as unnecessary additional danger. The Comp Plan FLU 1.1E states that the adequacy of the roadway should be considered when determining the timing of new development. Hale Road is a substandard road. It can safely handle another 1,000 cars per day. This project should be rejected or at least deferred until the entire length of Hale Road is brought up to county road standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. And I see Nancy was out when I said no more speakers, so she's the last speaker. Okay.
Hello. My name is Chris Osborne. I live at 22580 Hale Road, and I've been sworn in. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. Thank you all for your time and your careful consideration of all these issues that have been brought to you today. I wanted to commend these statements brought to you by my neighbors and fellow Pasco County citizens and also address my concerns about this project on Hale and Collier, which are primarily safety-related, again. I have four children. All are under 14 years of age, and my oldest child has a visual disability. She's legally blind from a genetic retinal condition that's progressive. Our driveway enters directly onto Hale Road, and there are no existing accommodations for her along this road. She's 13 years old, and I would hope that the primary function of planning commissions such as these would consider people and children just like her. I can't understand why projects are being considered to put so many additional houses directly off this road. I would think that before approving projects to add so many homes like this one, there would first be projects to address safety concerns such as these for Pasco County residents. Hale Road is extremely narrow, has no shoulder along the road, and I don't feel comfortable asking my children to even retrieve our mail because of the narrowness of the road. I enjoy riding my bike in the Cypress Creek Preserve Trail, which is only 1.7 miles from our house. However, to get there, I must ride my bike east down Hale Road. And listening to the proceedings in the planning meeting, I heard that to do that, I am, end quote, "Not in my right mind and also stupid." I wish there was a safe way to ride there with my children, but I constantly see and directly experience cars traveling in each direction, going fully into the oncoming traffic lanes in order to pass me on my bicycle. I see the same thing with children who are walking to school, which I assume is Pineview Elementary, where my daughter used to attend, that's less than 1 and 1/2 miles away, which is also within the 2-mile radius that can no longer get bus rides due to the Pasco County driver shortage. I hope you will give serious thought and consideration to these safety concerns on Hale Road and not go forward with this rezoning project. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Hazelwood, 34110. A nice place. Good evening, Commissioners and Madam Chairman.
And you've been sworn, Miss Hazelwood.
Yes. Yeah, sworn and sworn again. I am speaking as a citizen who has participated in Pasco County's government since about 2006. And this is kind of out of my way, but this happens to be one of those little Pasco County gems you have. Someone has already spoken about FLU 1.101, the compatibility review. And I want to say that the applicant is not always entitled to the highest densities. So, that they are asking for it, that's really not up to them. That's up to y'all. And I'm hoping you will not consider their densities, please. I submit that you should reject the project because it's really incompatible, as you've heard many people say. Right now, all the properties fronting Hale Road are single-family lots, many of them several acres, none less than 1/4 acre. From the map of the property appraiser's website, it appears that eight -- there are eight approved developments that have access to Hale Road. The largest is Lago Del Rey. It has 40 lots, at least 1/4 acre. The second is Bell Lake Vista 2, has 35 lots, none less than 1/3 acre. Bell Lake Vista 1 has 21 lots with an average size of 3/10 of an acre. Alsex has 20 lots, all at least 1/4 acre. Branch Ranch has 16 lots, all over 1/2 an acre or more. All the other three developments all have fewer than 10 lots, which average 4/10 of an acre. Thus, approved developmental pattern along Hale Road has already been established. Developments of 40 lots or less in the lot size are of 1/4 an acre. The project seeks 109 lots, over 2 and 1/2 times as many as the largest approved development, and more than 5 times greater than the average approved development. So, I suggest that it doesn't fit. If you can make the density less and the lot size increase over the 40 and 50 lot size, you'll have your area for your cars. The sustainability of this area is important. Please deny or cut significantly the density for this project. Thank you all. Thank you. Rebuttal from the applicant.
I think now I can safely say good evening. Again, Cindy Terrapani for the applicant. A couple of quick comments, and then if you have any questions for me, happy to answer. First of all, our application package had a detailed analysis of consistency with the comp plan, also contained an archaeological study showing no historic cemeteries, an environmental study showing no listed species on the site. The site has been cleared. It's been used for grazing, for citrus, so none of the endangered species are on the site. And I just want to make sure all that data is included in your analysis and evaluation. This is not a pristine environmental preserve. This site has been cleared, as I just said. We are not impacting any wetlands. Let me emphasize that. We are not impacting any Class 1 wetlands. We do have one extremely small Class 3 wetland impact because of the new driveway on Collier Parkway that was requested by the planning commission. The neighbors all objected to the Hale Road, so we've now moved it to Collier Parkway, and that's the only place we have a wetland impact. The developer will be required, as you all know very well, to meet all the design standards of the county and the SWF MUD and any other agencies that might be involved. So any concerns about stormwater or flooding or engineering design for driveways, all of those will be resolved during the technical review process. We heard a lot of problems today that are existing problems. And while I appreciate those problems, I have four grandchildren myself. Two of them are in school now. I appreciate that they have a very serious problem about kids standing on that road now that time has changed with little, few sidewalks and standing there in the dark. But quite frankly, that's not a project and an issue that's been created by the developer. It is an existing problem that needs to be worked out with the school board. We have revised our plan to have such a minimal impact, the lowest impact we can on Hale Road. Only 22 homes will use Hale Road as their primary access. All the rest of the project, the other 80-something lots, 87 at the most, would access through Collier Parkway. The residents that spoke today, there were very few residents that spoke that are immediately adjacent to the site that would be impacted directly. Those residents were Mr. and Mrs. Bishop, two residents in Sable Ridge, and the Martinez family that lives to the west side. And we've talked about the improvements, enhancements that we did on all of those edges to try and mitigate our impact there. And the last thing I want to say is, as you all know, you have the unfortunate job of trying to balance property rights, and we're asking you to balance the rights of this developer and these property owners to build a really small project with a maximum of 109 units and balance that against the rights of these residents to continue enjoying their life and their community, and we believe that there is a good balance with this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, for the record, Michael Razor. The full access connection to County Line Road, or Collier Parkway, rather, was reviewed with county transportation staff, including Margaret Smith, the county attorney, and was found to be approvable as the connection and associated turn lanes were found to provide for safe and efficient traffic operating conditions and would not adversely impact adjacent intersections. I have other rebuttal items, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I have some questions for you. Do any of you have any questions for him? Okay, so it was stated, someone stated it, that the other engineer that was hired says that that intersection, the plans in the intersection, won't work. I'm kind of summarizing that. Did you hear them say that?
And I actually have a paragraph in response to the other engineer, so I'm not sure if they mentioned a specific intersection not working.
Yeah, I think they said, I think I saw something about the turn lanes that were from, that you guys are proposing won't work.
I think what you may be referring to was the spacing criteria for the Collier Parkway connection, and that's what I just reviewed. We had spoken with transportation planning department staff and the county engineer and identified that our turn lanes will fit with the turn lanes that are currently out there already without overlap, without negative interaction between the two. So that has been reviewed with transportation department staff.
Well, you know, before we get into that, did our staff determine that we need, that we will have the sufficient width to put in the trail? If it's going, which side is the trail going on, and do we have what we need? Here comes Terry. Sorry.
You're referring to the Collier Parkway?
Yes.
Yeah, there will be sufficient room to put a path in based on the requirement, the width requirements for the ultimate Collier Parkway right-of-way width. It is planned to be a four-lane road eventually, and so the right-of-way that we're acquiring along Collier will enable a four-lane ultimate construction.
Well, four lanes plus the multi-use trail?
Yes, plus multi-use trail, which would be a 12-foot path that would include space to meander.
And that 12-foot is on the west side of Collier?
At this time, we don't know which side of the road that the 12-foot path will be on because there is not a planning document that illustrates that since Collier Parkway is not in the CIP at this time.
But we're, but we're getting.
If I were to hazard a guess, ma'am, I'm looking at an aerial. There is a sidewalk on the east side of Collier Parkway, and there is right-of-way that's available on the east side. I'm sorry, the west side.
West side, yeah.
So it would.
But I don't see that in their entrance feature plan where that could fit. So I just, maybe I'm just not, maybe I'm not reading it right. And I guess I could ask that to the applicant. If this project is approved and there's a trail on the side, I think I see where your, thanks, Terry, where the right-of-way preservation is. So your planning starts from the edge of that right-of-way preservation?
Yes, Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street. I have been sworn. What is required on your right-of-way preservation corridor, which I'm hearing from Terry, you know, from Centerline, is going to actually account for this multi-use path? If there is right-of-way, we're giving whatever your corridor provides. We're not asking for any alternative standards or reductions. So if there's, if that corridor takes that into account when a PD&E is done, then that right-of-way is going to be there. It appears to our engineers that you're going to have enough right-of-way to put a multi-use path on the west side.
Okay. If I have any other questions here. Okay, what, how many 40-foot lots are you guys proposing, and how many 50?
The mix, we've got all 50s on the north side, and then we have a mix on the south side, which is the one that's adjacent to Sable Ridge and Collier Parkway.
And in Sable Ridge, what size are those lots?
I believe there are lot sizes that butt up to the back of our southern side are 60 foots.
And are they also 10-foot setbacks in the back?
On their rear yards. I don't know that question. I mean, they look like, from the aerial, they look pretty standard. I don't know if it's 15 or 10, but.
10 is small.
You shouldn't have 10 rear yards.
But you are proposing 10 rear-foot setbacks, right?
No, we're 15. We're standard on the 50 and 110. We're doing 20 from back at, yeah, we're, I'm sorry, you're right, 10-foot from principal and accessory.
Yeah, I saw 10 here, which, so what percentage of lot coverage do you guys have?
It's 75%. That's for both, that's for both accessory and everything, so.
What's accessory?
So if you have accessory structure, I mean, that would be 15, so it'd be 16 if you just have a, you know, if you just have a principal structure, so that's how they look at that. But yeah, the rear.
Can you put a pool in a 10-foot setback?
What's that?
Can you put a pool in a 10-foot setback?
Well, it's going to have to be 5 foot.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think they can, but, depending on what the topography is in the backyard when they develop it out, but.
Do you have a clubhouse or something? I couldn't remember. Is there a clubhouse?
No, there's no clubhouse on these properties, no.
I couldn't remember.
No. There's parks, the neighborhood parks. We're not asking for, like, again, we're not asking for any alternative standards with regards to any of the right-of-way preservation that we're going to be dedicating, you know, parks, we're going to be providing everything that the code requires. But yeah, Sable Ridge on that south side, I mean, obviously on our eastern side and our south side, we're abutted by Sable Ridge, which, you know, has 1,200 and some units, and then Collier Parkway. So we have only 22 lots on the north side that are going out to Hale Road, and those are all 50s.
Sable Ridge does not have a clubhouse.
No.
No. Also, I think, missing trees, but we're looking into that. Okay. Board members?
Is there any more questions?
You know, someone brought up Babcock Ranch, and, you know, that's a very special development, but all their power lines are underground, as I mentioned at a meeting before. Looking at those power lines down Hale, sure would have been nicer if those were underground.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
I was going to say, is it to the board now?
Well, I was just, you know, it's, listen, it's a tough one, you know. Well, I was just, you know, it's, listen, it's a tough one, you know? You know, and like I said before, one of my fears for some of the folks that spoke today is that this may be a situation, okay, let's say it does go through today, that we'll be coming back next year, and the year after that, and the year after that, and the year after that. This, you know, you could end up with situations that are a lot more dense, I mean, a lot more dense, we've seen it happen. I mean, again, I can't tell you, you know, what's going to, who's, people's thoughts four years from now, you know, I just, I have no clue what it's going to be. I knew that 7-Eleven wasn't a good fit, and that's, when that was coming about, and I think those people just kind of went away on their own after having conversations with myself and probably of some of the neighbors. So I don't disagree with that, there was a concern when it came to, you know, environmental abpacs, because obviously the, the, the gas lines and the, and the tanks and everything being underneath, I don't know, that's, I'm a little torn here, I mean, I, because I, and I say that a lot because I know the boards, recent conversations about 40, 50-foot lots, so, but I think, I think Commissioner Mariano wants to say something.
I do, thank you.
But, look, can I ask a question real fast, because they mentioned something about that stormwater pond. Did you want to address that, the location of it, water flowing uphill and downhill? Get that one answered?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, again Cindy Terrapini for the applicant. Originally, all of the area, south of that out parcel, all the way to our southern edge of our property, was a stormwater pond, and it was rectangular going north and south. Because of the fact that we've now added that driveway to Collier Parkway, and added an interconnect up to the out parcel for whatever that might be, now the stormwater pond is linear, going, rectangular going east and west. I mean, it is still at this, at this lower site, lower section of the property, but our engineers have looked at it, and they can make it work. Obviously, the final design is going to have to be approved by the city, excuse me, by the county and by SWF MUD, but it's in the, generally the same place, it's just gotten a little bigger to the west. I can show you on the master plan if you like, or if that's a good enough explanation, I hope, if not, I'll be happy to answer some...
And when you guys do your calculations, is it based on 75% coverage on every lot?
Now you're asking outside of my scope of my experience. I'd ask that Mr. Fudge, the project engineer, to come up and speak.
Robert Fudge, 3030 Starkey Boulevard, Trinity, I have been sworn. Yeah, the, all the ponds preliminarily for the plan have been based on the impervious area for the proposed project.
Okay, all right, and Jack, Jack, I'm sorry, Jack was next, unless you have a question on that same subject, on the pond?
Yes, because how would that take in consideration for if they did add a pool, or if they did add a slab of concrete for a patio or...
That's why that 75% impervious lot coverage, that takes into account pool packs and patios.
Okay, Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you. And I'm just going to touch on this just because of, was said early on. And I just want, the standard of some court development, DeGroot Sheffield 95 in Florida, says even layperson or non-expert testimony is, in a zoning case, is perfectly admissible and can constitute substantial competent evidence, if fact-based. I've never seen as much fact-based evidence in a, in a hearing that we saw today. I've never seen a planning commission go through and list 13 reasons to why a project shouldn't go forward. I mean, the projects are not entitled to the highest and best use. Compatibility is a big thing, all the other things are mentioned in there. When I look at the safety, I look at the density, I look at the stormwater, I look at the compatibility. You know, we saw the pictures of the trash hollows getting stuck, the buses getting stuck, the traffic getting stuck, the, the lack of streetlights that are out there on the, on the sidewalk, without sidewalks, on a very narrow road where you've got to kind of walk in a ditch to go. It's just, this just doesn't fit. I, I really trouble to see why staff is actually bringing this to us with a recommendation at the get-go from approval. I'm glad the planning commissioner actually studied it, looked at it, and made, read the recommendations. I appreciate the people living through this whole thing to see it go forward. I will say, as commissioner, I was very pleased years ago, we put Bell Lake through and Hail Road through, to help with some of the traffic out there going through. But as we know, I don't care if you have your access on Collier Parkway, these kids going to school, going on Hail, Hail Road, it's dangerous down there. You've got them in the morning, daylight savings time, late at night coming back from sports, whatever, it just doesn't fit, and I think you've got more criteria from the planning commission, that recommendation from them just gives you all the reasons why this project shouldn't go forward.
And Madam Chair? Well, in fairness, the planning commission's voting was on the previous plan, and they didn't vote on this plan, where I think they, because I listened to it, I don't know if you listened to it, but...
They've changed, they've changed.
They changed the, the plan now. I'm still, you know, I agree, Hail Road, that, we need to look at that road. But, but in fairness, the planning commission, a lot of it, some of the comments are still relevant, but that was a different plan.
I'm going to say with the, with the, with the compatibility, smallest lots being 60-foot next door, with everything else going on there, and we've talked about, we just, I mean, we talked earlier today about 40 and 50-foot lots, what's going to go on there? There's not, there's not even a clubhouse for the kids to go play here. Where are they going to go? They're going to go somewhere, they're going to leave there, how are they going to get there? There's not sidewalks to the whole neighborhood to get there, so as far as safety, this is big. I, I just don't see it fitting. And then I said to the applicants when they were coming forward, to say, I don't, I don't like the fact that you just put everything in Collier. I think you should open the thing up to have more access roads, I think that's good. But even still, with all that said, this traffic on this road with all the data we've been given, all the information we've been given, this isn't, this is not a hard one to make.
Madam Chair? Commissioner?
Just, I don't remember, the school board member, was he for or against the project?
Against.
Against? Okay, because I am looking at the numbers, it is 96% capacity, but there are under 47 students, but by next year, they're estimated to be under eight students. I do have concerns without there being sidewalks for these kids that are walking to and from school. I don't feel that road improvement should be taking 10 years behind the development. I do believe in growth concurrency, even though we don't really have it, but we need to be able to keep up with our roads and our infrastructure. Like you mentioned as well, all of the data and the flooding and things, I am concerned. And I also think it's very important that the developers and the communities can talk and try to work on addressing all the kinks as well, because there are a lot of concerns that I have.
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yep.
So I'm looking at you guys. I'm saying, I, I can, I'm pretty good at counting votes, you're probably, don't, you can't come up from this one, okay? I'm just saying, I'm, I'm thinking...
Unless they make some...
Yeah, I know, I'm just, yeah, I was going to say, maybe, I'm just giving it an opportunity here.
I see, speak freely, come on.
I'm counting either a 3, 2, or 4, or 4, 1 probably, I don't know. I mean, I'm kind of counting them up here. I know when we had, this, for the, for the record, when we had our, when we had our conversation last week, you had mentioned you guys were at kind of a drop dead of, I think, data tomorrow. I mean, you've heard concerns, you guys think there's anything else you can do, and I think now would be the time to let them go.
I'd like to offer one last thing, Mike Dady, 1-9810, Morton Plus Drive, I have been sworn for KB Homes. I'd like to add, we're building sidewalks on both Hail Road and Collier Parkway where they don't exist today. We're going to make it safer, we're adding a new turn lane. I'd like to add the multipurpose trailway, we'll commit, we think we have the right-of-way now, we can design it, we can build it, it'll be a much safer situation. 109 houses, we're approving thousands of houses in areas that don't have this level of planning, two new turn lanes, a brand-new sidewalk system, a multipurpose trail, and yes, we have three parks for the kids. We have an eternal park, we have a lakefront park, and we have a park that's along Collier Parkway, so we have three recreational opportunities. This is a project that should win an award. It's 2.4 units per acre. I think Commissioner Moore's statement is well-taken. There was a Publix that was going to go in on this corner, and the Publix came very close to going forward, we wound up planning a residential development that the owners considered superior. The alternative is a pure commercial project. I'd like to see what the Rosebud Continuum would do with thousands of trips. This is a very low-density project, it's well-planned, it, it should win a ULI award, Commissioner, this is, I, I really don't understand why there's those comments from Planning and Zoning Board, I don't think they were well-thought-out. I don't, they didn't come from the board, I think they came as an afterthought from the Assistant County Attorney, and I don't think they're representative of the new project today, which is replanned based on those comments. We added a brand-new entryway onto Collier Parkway, it's a much safer project. This is a very supportable project, I hope we get your vote, thank you.
Michael, if you could, Madam Chair?
Yep.
And, and Michael, I want to say, you, your team that you've got, you have great professionals here, great representation, that you do. And in the development itself, I think you've done as good as you can do. But what's around it, you can't fix Hail Road all the way to 41.
But, but Commissioner, there's a 711-unit project just north of the...
If I could finish, sir.
Yes, sir.
If I could finish. When we built Hail Road, we knew we didn't have room for a sidewalk, we knew there were drainage, et cetera, but we wanted to get the connection for the traffic that was going on through, through the whole area, that and Bell Lake, just to get people back and forth. It wasn't to go accommodate more stringent development coming in. Now, you've got a zoning in place that you could go utility in, as they recommended, but to go fit this in, to go through, is not a, it's not, it's not the right thing to do, as far as, I'm concerned as a commissioner. And again, your team is great, I'm not downing your project, I'm just saying, this project in this place doesn't work for me.
Yes, sir, and I apologize for interrupting, but compatibility, when you have a 711-unit PUD to the north, and a 649-unit PUD to the south, how are we not compatible? We have 50-foot lots, more 50s than 40s, they have 65-foot lots, it's single-family to single-family. The rear yard, where we said we have smaller rear yards, we're providing a 20-foot rear buffer and a 10-foot additional rear buffer for landscape, fencing, and whatever, so we're going above and beyond code. 109 units, 2.4 units per acre, this is a very low-density, very supportable, very responsible development.
Can I ask you, the 20-foot buffer, what are you buffering against? Is that for...
The residential, single-family that's next to us.
When do we buffer, buffer residential to residential? We don't do that, why are we making them do that?
We're doing it because our lots are slightly smaller than theirs, so we're providing them extra privacy, and we're adding to our backyards, those smaller backyards you talked about, we now actually have more room, so it'll be a landscape area.
Okay, so, because I, I would have got rid of the buffer, but you, you are, that buffer gets added to the people's backyards?
Yes, sir.
It's just that they have to have a landscaped part of their backyard, is that right?
Yeah, we're going to buff fence on one side with landscape, and it'll be part of their backyard.
Okay. But people, we don't buffer land, residential to residential?
Not code, it's not code.
It's not to code, and we, I personally don't think we should be making people do that.
I mean, this is a really good project, we've worked for two years.
Mike, I, I, I want to tell some of the public here, I mean, and especially the kids who, I just have to say, did amazing presentation, and we appreciate all that Rosebud is doing. I do want to speak to the bishops after on something separate, but, but our family used to have an environmental, we used to do environmental tours on our property, and, and I appreciate how you want to have that kind of experience for people on your property. But your property rights end at your property line, and, and, and then this person over here has property rights. So I'm not sure if that, if there were, if, when you came in to do what you're doing, if, if it was zoned for school there, I, I, I don't see that on here, that's what I want to talk to you about, so, but, you know, we, we love what you're doing. So, so we, we have to take into account the laws and property rights of everybody, and sometimes it's very difficult for us to make these decisions. I would never have even considered approving this and the decision, and, and what it looked like before. And, and I do think that we have some challenges there on Hail Road, and I'd like to see what we can do as a county, I think, to make that a safer road. It just, I just cringe when I see those kids walking on there. I think the sidewalk will be helpful, and hopefully that's where the bus stop goes, is where the sidewalk is, I think that'll be beneficial for everybody. I texted Ray Gadd during this meeting, because I see Pineview Middle School over here, and I guess there's, I don't know, have we approved a development that's going in between Collier Parkway and Pineview? Is there something going in there? I don't know, because I don't, you know, I'm just looking on Google Maps. But I hope that we are going to provide a way for kids from down here to be able to get from Collier over to the school, not having to go through on these main roads. We need to have some kind of path, we need to plan that ahead of time, so then when something comes in, there is some way for all these kids to get to that middle school.
There is. There is. Substitution.
Well, when I'm looking on the map, there's, there's nothing here yet.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I mean, for all, think about all the high school kids, right?
The what?
The high school kids, going down Hail Road. Literally, when we tried to build that road, we tried to put a sidewalk in, we looked at it, we just couldn't fit it.
Well, you, you can't have the ditch, you would have to put, you'd have to put the, our administrator's an engineer, but I know how it would have to be, because I've seen it, it's going to have to happen on some other roads. They put a pipe in, and there's no more ditch, but there is a way to fix that, and I think the county...
And, and we looked at the expense of that.
Yeah, no, it's, it would be expensive.
So, so for this development to come in, we're going to go put that expense on all the other citizens in the county?
No, I don't think it's this developer's responsibility to fix that ditch.
But he's just taking care of his, but he's just taking care of his property.
He's going to fix his little part.
But what about the rest of it?
Yeah.
The rest of the kids are going to still travel those roads? I mean, we, you can't ignore what you saw in the video.
You can't put that cost on this property owner.
I'm not, but I'm just saying, it's not compatible with what we have in place. The, the infrastructure doesn't support it.
I think if Hail Road was fixed, and there wasn't so much flooding, and I believe there was a pool that completely had, looked like six inches of water over the pool. If the flooding issues weren't there, if the sidewalk issue wasn't there, if the safety issue wasn't there, if the roads were improved, I think you guys are doing a great project. If it was a different time, if these improvements were able to be made prior to your community coming in.
So, so SWF MUD will not let this project put any water on anyone else's property. That, they have to contain everything that is generated here, so whatever happens here is not going to, is not going to cause, fix those problems, and we should be looking at what's causing those, but it's not going to be coming from here. On the contrary, sometimes these, these fix those problems. But I, I wonder if the applicant might consider putting more 50s and less 40s, and maybe you might see more positive...
More 60s.
Or some 60s, yeah.
Madam Chair, and Michael Dady, again, I've been sworn, we do have more 50s than 40s. We started at 150 units when we submitted, we're down to 109, and frankly, only 104 are going to be built, because we put Collier Parkway in. So we have an approval for 109, but there will only be 104 houses, and there are more 50-foot lots than 40-foot lots. I, I mean, this is as low-density as, is viable, and still have a community that can have parks and recreation opportunities and affordable housing. I mean, right now, housing is facing a crisis, our industry is in a point where mortgages are such that a regular first-time homebuyer can't afford a house. This is one way to address that, having a mixture of lot sizes, 40s but more 50s will allow us to have an affordable housing. That's important, too. I mean, all these people that talked today, they live in a house. This area is a comp plan, rez 6, it's surrounded by development, water, sewer, police, fire, all these facilities are in there for a reason. It's a very supportable project. We would be happy to fit more 50s in if we could, but then we would have to impact wetlands. Right now, we have no houses on the lake. We could line that lake with houses, make million-dollar houses, and probably be much more profitable, but we're preserving the entire lake. You can't ask us to be good environmental citizens and have a sustainable development, in my opinion, where there is no development to the lake, no wetland impacts, and only 104 houses that will actually be built.
That's a good way.
It, it's, it's really a good plan, Commissioner, it's, it's, the sidewalks we're putting in are addressing an existing problem. We have sidewalks now at Hail going all the way to Collier Parkway, turning south to Sable Ridge. That will allow the kids to walk on a sidewalk. What's there now? We're going to wait till 2040, you know, when the hail is improved? We can do something today, not to mention the turn lane movements, and now the multipurpose trailway, the 12-foot trailway.
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I know, last go, I, I could tell you right now, you got two that aren't sure about it, and you got three that are no's. I can, I can count my votes, I'm very good at it. You know, I mean, I'm just being honest, so, I know, if there's anything else, hold on, hold on.
I'll go up to, I hate to sound like a bargain, but I will go to fifty-five percent on fifty-foot lots, so I'll lose additional density, I'll probably be down to a hundred and two units. I, I, I mean, we've worked on this for two years, we're in the market district of the county. This is where Publix is, the regional park, the schools, the new sewage treatment plant. This is where development was slotted to be for the last twenty-five years. It's not a virgin piece of forest that is somehow should be preserved because there is endangered species or other compelling reasons. I will amend our application to go to fifty-five percent fifty-foot lots, at an additional loss of, of lot density, if you guys can see it your way to get to that third vote.
I have one more question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and this is a tough question for me to ask, but I, I just, I'm sorry, but construction on your entrance to that project that's from on Hale north, your construction equipment, how is that gonna work?
That, that's, that's a tough one off the cuff to answer. I know that we use site maintenance, you have a construction entrance that whatever the safest area is, I think that would be off of Collier Parkway, where you have a temporary construction access to allow traffic to flow through. We would not propose to go off Hale Road for the construction access, except that area that is north by the lake, there are twenty-two houses.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. What, what, um, how can you put as least, um, construction, uh, traffic into that? I mean, are there things you can do to get, to do that very quickly, so that you have, I, I mean, I can see, I can see some issues with your dump, your fill trucks and all that coming in there.
I can, I can make a commitment to use the first-phase development to take care, if that's the concern, that the north of Hale Road is addressed first, then that can be a sequence of construction that we can agree to. In other words, we can hit that first, so that there is not truck traffic on the north side of Hale.
So, this is a question that I've never contemplated before, but is, is it possible that you, that that entrance can be done during the part of the season where there's, you have the ability to do it as quickly as possible?
I will, whatever condition I can to my contractor, but I can't agree to that upfront, we usually try to work within the dry season. There, there is no flooding caused by this project.
No, no, I, I'm just concerned, like, the width of a filter truck coming down Hale, going in, in and out of there, that's what I'm concerned about.
I, I can absolutely sequence it, so that we address Hale Road as our primary concern, we'll use the construction entrance off to Collier Parkway, come through the southern part of the property...
Oh, then come across like that?
And then come up, only for that brief crossing, so it'll be a very limited space of time onto Hale Road, and it's only twenty-two houses. I can make a commitment that we'll fill that area in the first phase of the development.
Yeah, like, in and out, I mean...
In and out, you won't even see us.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair. I'm gonna move to deny, or to support the planning commission's recommendation of denial, based upon all the criteria that they had submitted, based upon all the, all the evidence that was submitted to us as well.
I'll second.
Yeah, well, I think that's a dead project, for now. I don't know. I think you have three no's, and I'm still a maybe, but I have to say, seeing the video, seeing the video of those kids walking down that street, and, and dump truck, and the filter trucks, I, I just, I'm, I'm nerv, makes me really nervous.
We're making the existing situation better, not worse.
I know, but to get there, that's the challenge. I don't know, I can't speak, I mean, you have, you have two there...
Motion, a second.
And she's already, was against it?
Roll call.
Okay. It's not a roll call vote.
Oh, it's not a roll call?
Call the question.
It's not a roll call unless you, you think that...
So I have to call a motion, that's what I have to do, I have to call a question.
Okay.
I have to call a motion, okay. All those in favor of supporting the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah, sorry.
Call for the other side, just so that's...
Oh, any nays. I guess I'm gonna have to be an aye, too, I'm sorry. I just, the filter truck situation coming in on the north is just what's coming.
So that's five, zero?
Five, zero. That, that will get developed.
Madam Chair, before we adjourn, I'd like to bring up one point, coming up. On December sixth, there's a rezoning coming up with Saddle Brook, it's scheduled for Newport Ritchie. There's been a ton of calls already, it should've been held over in Dade City.
Was it in Newport Ritchie?
It shouldn't have been, it should be...
Because you only have one meeting in December.
Right, but it should be still, especially this, this event, should've been held in Dade City, so I would, I would like staff to be looking and working with the developer to actually make that hearing where it's gonna be in Dade City, not in Newport Ritchie. And one other problem I had with it as well, that staff should address as well, when they...
Thank you.
When they did their public hearing, now, keep in mind, Saddle Brook Resort can hold six hundred people in a room, they did a virtual meeting, and they limited it to a hundred people. I think they need to do another public hearing with the citizens out there to get their input.
Another neighborhood meeting.
A neighborhood meeting, sorry.
Neighborhood meeting, that'd be good. I got a call from a nine-year-old wanting to talk to me on that issue, and I called him back.
So, Mr. County Attorney, should I make a motion to that, or just, is that enough direction for staff?
I think if the Assistant County Administrator and the Administrator has, has gotten the board direction, they can take care of it without a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I have, I have one, hate to do this, but I, during the meeting, I got a, I got another email from outside counsel on opioid litigation, wanting us to participate in a complaint against McKinsey and Company, which was the advertising agency for Purdue Pharma. I had some reservations about the, that case when they initially proposed it. Right now, I am, I'm, the understanding is that they've already, they're in settlement negotiations, and if we file a complaint, we allow them to file a complaint, we'll get part of the distribution, if we don't file a complaint, we won't get part of the distribution. I don't think that this case will go to trial, and so, I, I think it's kinda like you need to get, get, just, if you'll authorize the county attorney not to object to the McKinsey intervention.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're adjourned. Okay. Oh, that's it? You went down on a...
Yeah, I, I, I wanna thank you all for having my last here public hearing camera.